Thank you, everybody, for coming to the March 23 city council meeting. Since this is a hybrid meeting, I would like to go through the meeting protocols. The city council meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. This format allows the public to view and participate in the meeting through Zoom, in addition to attending the meeting in person. As a result, in order to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner, certain protocols are to be followed. First, the host will keep all participants muted until public comment is requested or a public hearing is opened. The city council will first solicit comment from those attending the meeting in person. At the appropriate time, the mayor or host will specifically solicit public comment from the Zoom participants. Comment will be solicited from those participating through their PC or phone application. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand virtually. The mayor or host will individually recognize those wishing to speak and will invite you to speak. The host will then unmute your microphone. Your microphone will be remuted after you have spoken. Okay? How to raise your hand virtually? If you go to your application on the bottom toolbar and you click on reactions, it will raise a small menu which includes the raise your hand button. You just simply need to click on that to lower your hand. You simply need to follow the same process. And those are our virtual protocols for the meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Tom. With that...
Is that better, Derek?
Got it.
Okay. With that, we'll call the meeting in order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Any motions regarding the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Bryce, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
We have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements tonight, so we'll go to public comment. For those that are new to our city council meetings, public comment is intended for anything that's not currently on the agenda. So with that said, is there anyone that wants to speak under public comment? Is there anyone online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll close public comment. Consent agenda. Anyone have any items on consent they'd like pulled?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
By Josh, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent passes. No public hearings tonight, so we'll get into general business. First item, water use and service ordinance.
Denise, just sharing her screen, Mr. Mayor. So the first item on the agenda tonight, council, is a request to consider ordinance 273, amending the city code concerning water use and services to address significant water users and to adopt accompanying summary ordinance 274 for purposes of publication. The ordinance that is being presented is intended to address water users on our system that use more than 10,000 gallons of water per day or more than a million gallons a year annually. That is, that number was basically pulled from the DNR water appropriation permit process. Those numbers were felt to be significant, consistent with the DNR process, and significant enough that it has an impact on the operations of our system and the capacity of the system and with regards to relevancy of our water appropriation permit. The purpose of the ordinance is to allow the city council to determine, make determinations regarding the existence of a water emergency within the city. That's one element of it. To ensure sufficient water capacity to adequately serve a new significant user, to help the city ensure that there's capacity to serve its residents and existing businesses and water users in the community, and that such user would not be, and that they would not be detrimentally impacted with serving a new significant user, to ensure the city's water utility infrastructure is in place sufficiently to serve, and to ensure the city's prepared for any emergencies related to the municipal water utility or the availability of water through significant user agreements. So the ordinance requires a significant user agreement. Residential uses and the city are exempt from that. It establishes an application process and review criteria for applications as a significant user. Those criteria include that the city has either, either has adequate infrastructure in place to serve the significant user or has negotiated terms of any cost participation with the significant user associated with constructing infrastructure necessary to serve them. The city has adequate water capacity to serve the significant user, sufficient capacity is available for existing water users connected to the system, and any approved platted lots within the city. Remaining, there should be a remaining unallocated reserve capacity equivalent to two years of need for residential growth per the Metropolitan Council projections. The use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and water supply plan, and issuance of the permit will not create any noncompliance with federal, state, regional, local law, regulations, permits, or any licenses or agreements between the city and any government jurisdiction or private entity. It also allows for including reasonable conditions to be included within the agreement to protect the public health, safety, welfare, to ensure adequate compliance with the city, with this portion of the city code and the significant user agreement and the comprehensive plan and the water supply plan. It establishes a process for penalties and violations. It expands water shut-off authority and processes to include material, to now include material breaches of significant user agreements. And it clarifies that in the event of emergency restrictions, priority of use will be based on the water supply plan and Minnesota statute, section 103G 261, which establishes those priorities. Are there any questions for staff?
Any questions?
Just on the ordinance, that's what we're talking about now, and so...
Correct.
I guess I have a question as far as how we want to do this from a process standpoint. Do we want to roll through the ordinance? Do we want to just ask questions if there's changes or potential changes we'd like to consider? Do we want to talk through them and do, like, I'm just thinking, do we want to do motions and amendments as we go? Do we want to have one blanket thing at the end, or how do we want to...
I think each thing individually, each item individually is the way to go unless you feel differently.
Yeah. The ordinance is separate from the land use applications for the preliminary plat and from Niagara. Obviously, the Niagara request prompted us to take this look at our ordinance, but this is applicable generally to qualifying users. So I think this could be handled as a standalone item on the agenda. As you get into the plat and Niagara, some of those items are highly related, and you may want to go through it and then consider it, you know, consider it as a package, so to speak, the individual pieces after we've gone through all of the pieces. Might seem to be appropriate, but this one, I think, can be considered as a standalone.
Do you have any other questions?
I do. But yeah, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to dominate the conversation, but...
Oh, it's going to happen.
Go right ahead, Josh.
Well, so you kind of answered one of my first questions of how we came up with significant user. I mean, is there, is there a reason why, you know, and maybe you said it's because of DNR and the structure or whatever, you know, 10,000 gallons of water per day or a million gallons annually? I mean, there's, there's a big difference between the two. I mean, and would we see a user be in that 10,000 gallons a day but not actually hit the million gallons a year? I mean, give me an example of what that might look like.
Could be a process that, a food processor, somebody that's seasonal, where they may have operations that tick up seasonally, where they may have higher usage on a daily basis for only portions of the year. Could be a process, could be a user that does batch processing, where they have large usage in spurts of time as they're going, as they're, as they're going through their manufacturing process or their treatment process, whatever it might be. So those would be examples of somebody that might be a 10,000 gallons per day type of user. And on that side, what you're really worried about is the daily impact to the operations of the system. When you start talking about a million gallons per day, so it's, it's the daily fluctuation. When you're talking a million gallons per year, you're looking at the overall impact to the system, the overall capacity, your capacity with, under your appropriations permit. Because with that volume, you could have even larger fluctuations. You could have, even at a consistent level, do you have the, the capacity to be able to provide that on a regular basis? Do you have capacity on the system where they're proposing to locate, and so on and so forth? So there's really two separate purposes for why you're asking about the 10,000 and the million gallons.
And do we have an idea of how many significant users that meet this definition that we currently have in the city right now?
None.
We have none right now? And then has, has, have we as staff or as a city then thought about, you know, when we have, one is different, but let's say we have five eventually, or 10 eventually, or 15 and 20, you know, factoring in the capacity within staff to be able to process this, monitor it and, and follow up with it? Is there a cost to that that we have to consider as far as adding additional staff to do this work?
So that's a very good question. So with regards to the number, because they're a significant user, we don't expect to have a lot of them. I mean, we've been a city for, either merged or separate for decades. This is the first user on this class that we've had come to the city. There is the potential in the future, which is why we're recommending adoption of this ordinance, but it's not, not likely to be a large number, like 30 or 40, at least not within, the near term within the city, within, talking about the resources we have today. The second part of it is because of the nature of the use and the volume of fees that they would be paying associated with that use, they can cover their way. Now Niagara bottling, just because of the scale, which is probably on, is on the high end of the spectrum, that's kind of an extreme example, but they're paying a significant amount of fees. And if you look at the administration of that user, for the most part, you have the initial development of the agreement. We have a template in place potentially now that we can use, which would significantly reduce that process. And it's really on the front end. Once they're actually operating as a user, your utility billing staff can easily put them in their own, I'm getting kind of into the weeds, but you can put those users in their own group category when you're processing the permits, and it's an easy review to determine whether or not they're outside of their identified parameters. So yeah, there is some additional work, but they're also going to be paying higher, they're going to be paying substantial fees to help pay for the costs of doing that additional work, and it's not what I would consider to be overly burdensome or disproportional. If you look at the amount of usage that they have relative to an equivalent number of homes, those homes would generate much more demand on our resources than those individual uses would.
Still on the general page so far, just, it says, you know, we'll be able to include penalties for exceeding the annual capacity per each of the agreements. Is there recommendation or anything that we want to have consistent penalties or anything like that, or is it just going to be specific to each agreement that we have with each specific significant user?
So within the ordinance itself, that's a good question. Within the ordinance itself, it does specify the penalties if they exceed, for instance, the permitted usage, which in, in this case would be 100, they would have to pay 150% of the regular rate for anything they use over their permitted limit. But you could potentially have a bad customer, somebody who really doesn't care, and they'll just pay the fee. So we needed to have a more progressive penalty system. So that means that they will also, we have the potential to eventually just shut off the water if they don't comply. Now, there's due process to that. You don't want to be in a situation where you can just arbitrarily and capriciously go and turn off, turn off the spigot, so to speak. They have operations, there's things that consider impact of their operations. So what we want is compliance. We want them to comply with the terms of their agreement, and we want to bring them into compliance. So the first penalty is you have to pay more. The second penalty, and this gets into the terms of the significant users agreement, is that we notice that we're going to require you to provide a corrective action plan. We want you to come back into compliance, but you also have to tell us how you're going to fix it and fix it going forward. The reality is anytime when you have a business or a process, sometimes things happen. A valve got stuck, something like that. They're still going to have to pay for, they're still going to have to pay the penalty, but maybe it's something they just need to fix or something they need to correct with the process. If they don't comply with that step of the process, we ultimately have the ability to shut the water off. But we would, there would be, and I'm getting again into the significant user agreement a little bit, but within the ordinance, it provides for the ability to shut the water off and then restore it after they've come into compliance, and that requires a notice, a hearing, and then the city council can determine that we would shut their, their water off.
And forgive me, I am going to ask questions that I already know the answer to, but I just want some of this to be out as part of the discussion, so, thank you. And so now moving on to the, the section, section one, looking at the emergency restrictions. Is there criteria of, like, it's very broad, and maybe that's good for the city because it allows flexibility, you know? Is there criteria for what it means when, whenever the city council determines there's an emergency, an emergency exists and is in the public interest? I mean, that's just a very broad statement in my mind.
It constitutes an emergency, as well.
So there, there are guidelines. So within the water supply plan, it identifies situations when you're going to have constricted use and, and when you may need to put measures in effect to restrict use. So that in and of itself provides some guidance as to when to be appropriate times to limit their use in emergency situations. But there's infinite number of things that potentially that might cause that, and the problem within the ordinance, if you define these are your emergency situations, if it's not there, then it starts to tie your hands, it puts you into a box. And so the ordinance assumes that there is guidance, and it also assumes that councils will make reasonable decisions when that is necessary, and then apply it per the guidance within state statute and within the water supply plan.
No, I appreciate that, and I like the flexibility and whatever. I did hear you say, and we'll see throughout this, and this will be a theme of mine probably, about referring to the water supply plan. And, I mean, we talk about it all over the place, and it's referenced in this ordinance, it's referenced in the significant user agreement, it's all over. I guess my opinion is, and I've shared this with staff, is that our water supply plan is old and outdated, in my opinion, and, and there are certain areas that, again, in my opinion, should be updated if we're going to rely on it for, you know, determining when emergency exists and how we're going to apply restrictions and whatnot. Do we have a plan to update the water supply plan in the near future beyond what, I guess, very minimal requirements that the DNR has required us to do to meet the appropriation permit request?
We, we certainly can. We've asked the city engineer's office to evaluate the plan and identify other areas that could potentially be updated. But overall, the plan itself is intended to be updated periodically. So for instance, with our comprehensive plan, if we amend a section of the comprehensive plan, we don't update everything else within the comprehensive plan. We can, and in this case, we can also update this. We updated the sections that are relative to the appropriations permit, but we can update other sections. I've asked the city engineer's office to evaluate what, what can and could be updated and provide an estimate of the cost for that. So that can be done at any time, and it can be done separately from any current applications that we're looking at right now.
There is a DNR step of approval in any update we would do. We can't just do it on our own. We'd have to submit it and go through the normal channels, but it can be updated. It's your plan, so.
And it also does require a comp plan amendment.
They can here in the other room.
It also requires a comprehensive plan amendment to, so there'd be public hearings, and it would have to be also submitted to the Metropolitan Council for final acceptance.
And have we submitted, you know, those updates to, for the appropriation permit to the Met Council and to the DNR and/or to us for approval at all?
We've only submitted to the DNR per their request, the, the updates that they, that they requested.
And I guess I'm just curious, do we, and, and the reason I'm going to continue to pound this is because I think, you know, before I'm going to feel comfortable voting on anything moving forward, knowing that this water supply plan, if this was, you know, if we're considering things that wasn't a significant user, wasn't a huge water user, you know, maybe I wouldn't care as much about the water supply plan being current and up to date. But that's where I feel, I mean, it is, it's a significant variable in having all of our ducks in a row to make sure that we're ready to move forward with things, so. And I don't know, maybe I'm the minority or the only one thinking this, but...
I mean, it's fair to point out that the primary, the primary function of the water supply plan is basically how do you deal with emergencies with regards to water supply?
And how do you promote conservation?
And how do you promote conservation? Those elements within the plan are sufficient, in staff's opinion, right now. Niagara is covered within the, within those criteria, and those criteria that we use specifically within the plan are based on state statute, which isn't going to change immediately. So it's always good to update your plans. We don't feel that the information that's in the plan right now is wholly inadequate simply by adding an industrial user to the system and that the plan would cover, cover that.
Josh, was there something in particular with the water plan that you did not like?
And it's not that I don't like it, I just think it's old outdated data that doesn't apply to anything that we're talking about right now. And we look at the water use priority section of it and table 18 of it that doesn't even have a, an industrial user because we don't have one contemplated in it. And I guess it's the overall thing. I mean, I can sit and go through line by line of the pieces of it.
Let me ask you this. Are you, understand this is a hot button issue for you. Are you not wanting to vote on anything until that's addressed? Or is there specific things that you would like addressed before a vote takes place?
I don't feel comfortable moving forward with anything until this is done since it is such a significant portion of what we're talking about. Again, if it was just another industrial user or an application for an industrial something or other, it might be a completely different discussion. But we're talking about an ordinance that applies to significant water users. We're talking about a significant user agreement that is for a significant water user, and we're going to be doing all this, and yet I feel, and I'll just agree to disagree with the, the staff's opinion, that I, I think there is a lot in it that could slash, should be updated, and whether or not, you know, the DNR should require that, you know, we could debate that. But I, I don't know. I mean, I think there's lots of pieces of it that should be updated.
But ultimately, you'd like to see it updated and completed before taking a vote?
I would, I, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that I would feel much more comfortable with it being updated unless we're comfortable, I mean, just for example, I'm looking at the priority use, and it gives recommendations on how we reduce in those emergency situations. It's basically a 60% reduction, if I do the math. Is that going to apply to the significant user, you know, in that emergency? Are we just going to automatically reduce, reduce everything by 60%? So yeah, I mean, I, I am super concerned that we're not making sure that this is in place first to comply with the demand reduction stuff, to, to comply with 103G, to, to do that, I think we're getting out in front of our skis a bit. And like I said, I can go through section by section of this ordinance, but really it comes back to, if the water supply plan is not updated, all of the references to it are kind of useless, in my opinion. That's what my concern is.
Fair enough.
But if nobody else has that concern, I'll continue to go through my issues with the ordinance.
I have, I have the same concern. I'm in the same boat.
Anyone else? Yep. All right. So if we're all of the position that the plan needs to be updated before acting on anything, what do you guys want to do?
Well, so question back to maybe Rich and, and the team. I mean, do we have, what, what is the timetable to, and cost and everything else to look at an update, a comprehensive update to the water supply plan?
So it was last updated as required for our comp plan amendment 10-year cycle in 2018. And so it's, you know, the, the dates and the flow numbers and the usages reflect that time and what we knew about what might be coming at that time. So it doesn't reflect large industrial users. It's on.
Be close.
Oh. The, like Tom said, the key elements of residential, commercial, industrial, nonessential, all still apply. There's stepped guidelines for both emergencies and for increased conservation if necessary, what those triggers are. That would all still apply. So updating the numbers probably wouldn't take very long, week or two. We have that data updated, it's just repopulating a template, and that template must be, we can't change the format. But if we get into policy discussions about at what level do you shut off a significant, you know, if they're a consistent user, do you make them follow the same thing as people that only have to turn off their sprinklers? Those kinds of things can take some time to work through that I can't really predict, but could add quite a bit of time to the process. Scheduling and holding public hearings, that stuff, you know, you could be looking at two, three months at least.
Where are we at with our timeline on the development applications?
Based on recent consultation with the city attorney, the 60-day clock reset following the DNR's determination on February 20, beginning on February 28.
Okay, so we're not under a tight time schedule then, it sounds like?
Can I ask a follow-up?
Not in that regard.
Or dig deeper on that then? Knowing that we don't have the water appropriation permit granted yet, I'm just, I'm curious, does that constitute a part of the application? Like, I feel like it's a significant portion of the application itself, so until we have that, is the application considered complete? Knowing it can't be processed without, and I know we put in there its contingent on or whatever conditioned on it being approved. What if it's not approved? And/or, I guess going further, if there are conditions put into place by the DNR, you know, it may trigger, you know, additional steps, studies, blah, blah, blah. So I guess I am curious how the 60 days would apply if the DNR comes back and says, hey, nope, we're going to do all these, we require all these tests and additional things. Does that 60-day go out the window then at that point, or...
So the 60 days is related to the council making a decision on the application. A 60 days does not approve to meeting any, to meeting any conditions of the application. Those are separate items that have their own separate timelines. In the case of the appropriation permit, that will be the timeframe under which the Department of Natural Resources makes their decision. Once they do, if there are certain conditions that need to be met as part of that, the significant user agreement specifically spells out that that does not become effective until the permit is approved and all of the necessary conditions are met. So if the permit does not allow us to turn up the dial, so to speak, with regards to our withdrawal, before certain conditions are met, the appropriation, the appropriation permit does not, or the significant user agreement does not go into effect. So at that point, if the applicant undertakes any actions, they're doing so at their own risk in advance of having all of those conditions met.
It does not change, that will not have an impact on the 60-day issue. You will have to take action pursuant to that.
You have more?
I got a lot more, but I mean, I guess are we moving forward, I mean...
That's the question.
Yeah.
So given where we're at, we have a number of things related to Niagara, and if we're not comfortable taking a vote on anything Niagara-related without the water permit or the water plan being updated, I'll ask again to the council. What do, what do we want to do? Do we want to go through each of these items? Do we want to table any votes?
I would say that if it's not a lot of work for the staff to table our votes until we have the WSP updated. I would say that, uh, if it's not a lot of work for the staff to table our votes until we have the WSP updated.
So if I could get clarification, what items are we talking about? Cause the current item is an ordinance which is not directly related to any of those items. And then we have a preliminary plat which is also not directly, um, related to the appropriation permit, et cetera.
I mean.
So I guess I would clarify what I, so if you guys are looking at waiting for more information, what items is that relevant to? Because obviously appropriation permits vary, is germane, um, related to specifically to Niagara bottling. We can't supply the water unless we have the appropriation permit. The preliminary plat, um, doesn't require necessarily appropriation permit. And we could approve that conditioned upon final plat waiting for an appropriation permit. So there's no specific reason to, in staff's opinion, to hold any decision on the preliminary plat, pending the appropriation permit. And the ordinance itself is not specific to Niagara and is generically to significant users. So that, of course, is not, um, related at all to a decision on our current appropriation permit request. So, um, the, the council can certainly hold or wait on any of these items as they want relative to state statute, the sixty day rule. But I just wanna clarify what items.
Well, I think the concern is everything's connected to one another. So, you know, I, I would look at the plat and say the plat itself is fairly harmless, um, in some regards. It's really not connected to this. I mean, I would be okay moving forward with the, with that piece of it, but I can certainly understand if the argument that everything's connected if we wanna hold off. And I don't have any objections to that.
Well, I was, I was just gonna say that, I mean, I, I wouldn't have an issue visiting the plat and then the rezoning. But as it relates to everything else, I totally agree that we should hold off on those decisions until we get that updated.
Well, I a hundred percent agree. And I think because depending on what happens with the water appropriation permit, there may or may not be conditions that the DNR imposes, such as studies or not, or, you know, just different conditions that, um, they may want to, uh, have in place. I'm looking at through the lens of protection of the city and making sure that we're covering everything on our end if the DNR does not do, uh, or put on any conditions or any protections or anything like that. And maybe we want to then, uh, consider that if, uh, we feel it's in the best interest of the city or, or our neighbors in, in the township or, or whatever. And I think, you know, just looking at one oh three G and, and how all these pieces are interconnected, I mean, the significant user agreement, I think ties into the, and it's just, it's referenced everywhere. I mean, it's just water supply plan, water supply plan is consistent with, and we rely on it. And, and, you know, there's the demand reduction measures and, and all this stuff that's in there, which then I could argue that it's connected to the rates and it's connected to the, you know, different things like that. And I just think it's critically important. And like I said, I just don't, I don't wanna get too far out in front of anything. I don't wanna set anybody up. I don't wanna set up the applicant, I don't wanna set up the city, I don't wanna set up, you know, any of us going too fast. I also don't wanna drag it out and we have timelines that we have to comply with and we will. But I also just.
What I'm hearing is, is probably better off to table everything and do everything at once when we're ready to do everything at once rather than doing things one, one at a time. Is that a fair assessment?
I mean, uh.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, no, I don't care, I like, I'm totally fine. But, so yes, and but, and or, you know, I'm happy to go through stuff too because, you know, I brought this up to staff a month or two ago about my concern about the water supply plan. So we could've had this updated if it only takes a matter of weeks, which is frustrating to me. You know, so we could've been in that position had we not just checked the boxes that the DNR, again, staff and LRE and, and consultants, everybody did their job. So I'm not even trying to imply that nobody didn't. But, um, you know, we could be doing all of this stuff. So I mean, I'm happy to go through a whole lot of stuff tonight and, and we can hash out some of the questions, concerns, issues so that when or if we get to the point where we've updated everything, we've gone through all the questions. This is the first time we've had this discussion in four plus months, so. Like, I've been waiting to have this discussion and, and really start moving through the process. So happy to go through as much as folks want or wait.
I think we, I think we should go through those items. If we wanted to table each of these items for a future council meeting, can we do it in one motion?
You could, but I would not specify that it's when the water supply plan is complete because you do have a sixty day rule that you have got to comply with. So I would table it, um, and make sure it comes back within that timeframe.
So if someone wanted to make a motion to that effect, that'd be okay to do.
So moved.
So a motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. You're not discussing anymore because you just tabled it, you have to table it after your discussion.
I retract, what's, what's the step?
Unmoved.
So I would discuss whatever items you wanna discuss and then.
Cause I, like, I don't wanna not.
Are we too late? Did we already officially just table?
We can pull it off the table, can't we?
Can we untable it?
You could, you can make a motion to rescind.
All right, so moved.
Second. Fix my mistake.
Motion by me, second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Back on the table.
Back on the table.
All right, it's all good.
All right.
So do we wanna click, keep clicking through the ordinance then, since that's what we're on?
Well, how do you have your questions structured?
I, I went through, I went through the seven hundred and five pages and I put them in order.
Okay, well then let's go through the ordinance.
That makes more sense.
I mean.
Way to be organized, Josh.
Well, and, and to be clear, I mean, so I did send these to staff too, uh, or ninety percent of them, whatever I had finished yesterday morning. So, um, so back, back to the ordinance, um, piece, um, where are they? Let's see. Section five, part A. Purpose, I appreciate the intent, consider enhancing level of ca, oh, this was just talking about we have sufficient, adequate, detrimentally impacted, sufficiently serve, a lot of like broad terms that, I mean, are there good definitions anywhere? Is this another place where we like some flexibility in here?
Well, first of all, it's your purpose statement. So your first, your purpose statement is to talk about what you're doing and why. It doesn't get into like evaluative items. But within that, I think those, that language is sufficient. I mean, that's why you're doing it. You wanna make sure.
They can't hear out there.
Sorry, I want, you wanna make sure that you have sufficient capacity, that you have, you know, adequate infrastructure, that things are not detrimentally impacted. So for purposes of a purpose statement, we think this is more than sufficient.
Okay. Section five, G, basis of the agreement. And now I'm just looking at, you know, you got one and two seem to hit the infrastructure, the appropriation permits, angles or perspectives. Number three talks about capacity to serve current uses and approved plats. Does this, or would this contemplate like soon to be approved plats or plats that are in development or in the application stage or?
So within that section further down, uh, we talk about preserving capacity for two years, equivalent to two years of residential use. So that addresses, provides elbow, elbow room for what's coming. Also, if anything's not approved, it has no inherent right to capacity, it's first come, first served. So if one development gets to the finish line before another, that's great. Now, if the council has questions about whether or not that's a sufficient amount of capacity or elbow room, um, and again, it's, that's for, we've already taken into account all platted lots, you know, um, within the city and the capacity they need, plus those two additional years to give additional elbow room. That seemed reasonable given our development history. Is it possible that everything could go absolutely crazy and we had another Niagara? I'm just joking, but let's say we had another significant user come in and we might be tight? Yeah, we might. And in that case, we would have to deny it because it'd be premature because we don't have sufficient capacity. The idea of the two years is it takes about two years for most of the things that you would need to do for most major capital improvements or any permitting process that you would need to go through to get it. There are some that take longer if we have to. And when we eventually will need to do an expansion of the water treatment facility, that's probably closer to a three year time span. So that becomes an issue of when do you trigger the, when do you trigger it? Do you wait until you're up against it or do you start a little bit earlier?
So that leads to the next question too. I mean, so you, you got the two years of residential development. Based on Met Council projections, um, so, I mean, you hit on it, so what if we begin ramping quicker than these projections? Do we like the Met Council projections? They've been good, they've been off, they, you know, just as we consider, you know, changing this into the future, if we're gonna change anything, just maybe we wanna have that discussion now or at a certain different point. But why don't we contemplate or include commercial or industrial development? We just say two years of, of residential.
That's, that's a way of calculating that buffer. It's just a, it's a, it's a clean, calculable, definitive number that you can use for calculating that amount of buffer that you want within your capacity.
And would like ERUs cont, be, be that way that we could connect it to a new industrial? I mean, would we, would the ERUs be that residential piece?
Yeah, so one, one, one housing unit, one ERU. So it does, it, it translates into.
So then we could look at it from a commercial, like, as we're looking at.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, perfect. Any questions?
Mine are, mine are further downs, you probably have the same ones.
You're answering on my highlighted areas, so.
Keep on truckin' there, Josh.
All right, um. Section five, I, conditions, uh, may include reasonable conditions in order to protect the public health, safety and welfare. What specifically have we listed as these conditions and maybe in the documents? And is this, would this be in the significant user agreements that it's tied to?
Yeah, so, so this, so it, it provides for us the ability to put conditions in the agreement to basically protect the public interest.
And I'll say bear with me again, because as I started making this list, it was, and then I got to page five hundred and forty or something and probably got my answer later on, so I'm just gonna read through these. And then section five J penalties, um, I would propose as we're moving forward here that we delete the be entitled to and we just say the city shall assess a penalty surcharge and.
So.
Make it more directive.
So staff has two related opinions to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So the entitled to, quite honestly feels, we're assuming that the entitled to, um, that you have concerns about any sort of obligation it may make on our part or maybe unnecessary language. We do think, uh, if you take that out though, it implies that there's discretion on the part of the city. Shall be entitled to, doesn't necessarily have to make use of that entitlement. If the concern is that you want to make it absolute that we charge them, um, staff's argument would be why, why tie your hands to that? There may be circumstances, quite honestly, however rare, that we might not want to charge them. What if there's a natural disaster that occurs in the city of Faribault and it gets nearly wiped off the face of the planet? They may have no water service and through FEMA or whatever, this is the closest bottling facility to provide fresh water. Are we going to, you know, would we want to apply penalties to them in that situation? We might wanna have discretion not to. So we would suggest separate language, which would be the city shall, it shall be assessed unless otherwise directed by the council. So if there's unique or extenuating circumstances, the council can approve. That's the way, when it was written, it would be intended to work anyways. But we can clarify it and we can make it that explicit.
I mean, I like that, I, I mean, I just, I mean, I, I felt like the appeal process would've allowed for that reconsideration of any penalties anyway. So I thought we kinda covered ourselves there, but, I mean, do with it what you want. I, I'd say get rid of it, but if we think that it can be tweaked, that's cool too.
Just curious, what, I mean, what is the argument for getting, for getting rid of it? Seems like you're in favor of that.
I just would like no discretion, I mean, I, it just, like, depending on the council in the future, you know, we could just be waiving all these penalty fees and then it's a pointless piece of the ordinance that really has no enforcement teeth to it.
And, and staff's position is why would you put handcuffs on yourself? So, um, and if the idea is the intent of the councils, we're gonna charge it normally unless it's some extenuating thing that it, the, that discretion has to be at a council level and not administrative, I think we can tweak the language to reflect that.
And then with these penalties, um, do we, do they just go into the general fund? Do they go into a special fund? I would like to see them funneled into, uh, whether it's a special revenue like fund or, or something that could be set aside for addressing environmental issues, water issues, I mean, things like that. Or where does, where do the penalties go at this point, the way it's written?
So, um, you guys hear this from me all the time, but for the benefit of the audience, municipal accounting is a lot of separate, discreet funds under the overall city umbrella. The best way to think of it is at home, you have envelopes in your drawer, you have one envelope for the mortgage, one envelope for gas, one envelope for groceries and so on and so forth. And the dollars that go into those envelopes and the activity that occurs in those envelopes don't mix. In the case of the city, when you have your utility funds, the operations and dollars associated with the water utility fund remain within the utility fund and are only for uses and revenues are only for use within the utility fund. So we can't hypothetically take dollars from the utility fund and go spend it on surface water, um, issues because that's a stormwater fund, it's not a water fund related item. However, the council can earmark revenues for specific purposes. So if you wanted to take those dollars and they would be put in a fund that would help facilitate or promote water conservation in the city or something like that, that is related to the fund, you certainly can do that.
Is that something you'd like to see?
I do, I mean, it, it, I did something when I was at the Department of Health before, uh, actually, once I got out, I actually got the law changed and fixed it and cleaned it up, um, to be able to carve out those fines and penalties so that we could actually capture them, put them to good use or, or whatever. So I mean, I think having a clean, something listed cleaner would be good.
Tom, if I may, if I'm correct, you would do that through a policy change, not directly in the ordinance?
That, that would be through policy and budget.
Okay.
And wouldn't be part of the applications, that would just be a policy decision on, on part of the, on the part of the council.
And then we get into the, the material breach of the, uh, significant user agreement, uh, when it exceeds a hundred and fifteen percent of the allocated capacity. Now, this will vary, obviously, depending on the user and the agreement and how much water they're using or, or not using. You know, I don't know what folks' opinions are on the fifteen percent over the, the approved amount. I can shut up for a minute and let others talk. No, I was a queue, those go ahead.
I didn't have a problem with the hundred and fifteen percent. I think I had thrown out a hundred and twenty, but I didn't have a big feeling either way on it. Did anyone else?
I was shooting for a lower number.
You were shooting for a lower number?
Well, and, and the reason why, you know, I, I said what I said about the depends on the size because if we looked at, uh, an applicant that's looking to do a hundred and fifty-five million a year, fifteen percent is seventeen point two five million gallons of overuse. Fifteen percent of three hundred and ten million is forty-six million gallons of overuse. That's half of the current city's, no, whatever we do now. I mean, that's a significant amount, um, depending on the user. Now, if it's, if they're only doing a million gallons, obviously it's not as much. But for this significant of a use for this particular discussion, that fifteen percent really like, holy crap, that jumped out at me. And, and that seemed like a lot. And that gets back to my previous question of how many significant users do we have right now in the city? We have zero. So if, if it stays the way it is and somebody, i- if a user at a hundred and fifty-five million went over fifteen percent, they're already doing more than any other significant user in the city. And I have concerns with that.
I don't know if there's a magic number, I, I mean, is there a number that you had in mind that you'd be more comfortable with?
Probably zero, um, in, in the approved amount. And because I, I get back to making sure that we're protecting the city. And as we bump up against, uh, the water appropriation permit and as we're, you know, closer, I mean, you know, after, if we get this one approved, it's not gonna be that big of a deal if anybody goes over by five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent. But as we get closer to that bump or that, that limit, i- it could really significantly matter and could put us out of compliance with our own water appropriation permit and or stop development in the city. And that's where I think zero would be my target or maybe very slightly higher than that, but zero seems the cleanest.
I mean, the way this is written, the way this is put together, I, I think the whole idea of going to a hundred and fifteen percent was to provide an opportunity to say, hey, you're over, can, you can correct this issue. You're saying no buffer or even slighter buffer than the fifteen percent.
I mean, really, it's still, e- even if there's a breach of the material, or there's a material breach of the significant user agreement, we'll allow corrective action, they'll get a penalty, they'll pay a hundred and fifty percent of the rate. And so really, this just tells me, you can do it, you just gotta pay a higher amount for whatever percent over you're gonna go and.
So you don't feel there's like teeth to it, really?
I, yeah, I just, I think it's encouraging overuse and if you got the money or the, the, the reason to go above, you might as well. Or you could, you could choose to as for business decisions, um, so.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Does everyone else think?
I don't know if I'm at zero, but I'm pretty close to it. You know, I do think there should be some type of buffer in there, um, you know, maybe five, maybe less than that. I don't know, something a little bit above zero, but I do think it needs to be on the lower side than fifteen.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't necessarily.
For that exact reason. I mean, brings up a good point. You got somebody who uses 155 million gallons or 310 versus the 1 million. I mean, that's, that's a lot of water going over.
Yep.
I mean, if I'm operating a plant where I'm bottling water, I wanna know how much water we're using, right? Now, and if we're getting to the point where we're going over.
Yeah, there's monthly monitoring. So I mean, the ability to actually step in and say, yeah, and catch the error before, you know, it gets too far, I think is very real. I have trouble coming up with a number 'cause I, 'cause it's, you're kind of throwing a dart at the wall, you know?
That's why zero's cleaner in my head, but I, and I can't remember who I was talking to, Jay something or other, and this is the negotiations, I mean, fine, 5%, whatever. I mean, it's better than 15 in my brain, so.
I think it's reason, I think it's just reasonable to have some sort of buffer in there for, you know, like emergencies, whatever stuff happens. We've all had a leaky toilet or something. Obviously, the scale's much bigger when we're talking about Niagara, but I'm open if we wanna consider, go ahead.
Just to clarify, it's probably not about error or mistakes as much as it is about at the time they would fill out this application and make their request. They may not be able to predict exactly how productive their facility might be relative, even if it's a, say, water quality. They kind of know what water we have and what it should do and they can make their best estimates. But when they fill it out, they're not in production, so they're still estimating. So there probably needs to be some cushion there, just for the vagaries of, you know, science and math and precision.
I, I pers, I personally would push back on that a little bit in the sense that if you are running multiple plants across the country, that you know what, what the plant a certain size is, produces, how much it needs to produce, how many people you need to run it, so on and so forth. So for me, I feel like the parameters are, should be a little bit less on a company who's using water in that sense.
That's all true. Keep in mind the water chemistry in every location is different as well.
Also keep in mind, going to the mayor's point, this ordinance applies to all businesses, so while, so there's, there is the issue of scale.
I, I mean, I, I don't think we've forgotten that. I mean, we're, we've been talking about that the whole time. I'm just saying, like, when it comes to production and you're bottling water, like, there's plenty of plants across the United States, you obviously know what your square footage is gonna produce, your lines, everything, so just throwing that out there.
Well, do we need to decide right now? I mean, or, I mean, what, what is this?
I'd like to at least give some direction.
Can I, something else I think that we can, we could consider, I don't know if people can hear me, is like a, you know, first violation, second violation sort of thing, if we're gonna factor that into.
That's in there, isn't it?
So, so that is.
It is in there?
That's in there.
So, so what this does is determine when they're in a material breach and then that triggers a progressive process.
Well, consider, it does a corrective action plan.
Yes. So if they, if they exceed the number that we're talking about right now, that would trigger a corrective action plan.
But I like where you're going at this because it gets to something later on in one of my questions with the significant user agreement. You know, i- if there's repeat violations, you know, in any significant user agreement and the one we're, we were considering for tonight, it doesn't have an out for the city whatsoever. You know, maybe if there's X number of repeat violations during a certain timeframe or, or period of time, we, it, it automatically triggers a revocation or, or something with due process and blah, blah, blah. And Andrea, you know, chime in as I'm looking at you.
So we, so we can have penalties to achieve compliance. We can have, we can have penalties for purposes of being punitive. But if they come back into compliance, we can't climb the surface. You were late in paying your utility bill four times, so we shut off the water to your house forever. The same logic applies to a business. So we can have processes and penalties and punitive actions put in place to achieve compliance, but they're for the intent of achieving, of obtaining compliance. And our, our biggest stick is to shut it off, but it's to shut it off to get them back into compliance and then we turn it back on. I don't know, and I'll defer to the city attorney, I don't know that we have the legal right to just say, we're going to turn you off forever, you have three strikes and we'll turn off the water to your facility forever.
And before the, the city attorney chimes in, because I respect your opinion, I just wanna get more comment out maybe first. You know, I think there, there are examples and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, like if somebody were to make false information, material information on an application or on certain things, that is, you know, that is allowable to revoke, suspend licenses if it's intentionally misusing. So that's where, and maybe, maybe it's the word intentional, or maybe there's, there's a piece to this of intentionally violating or intentionally going over and now you have to prove intentionality and all that junk. But I know that, you know, as a licensing entity at the state, you know, we were able to revoke licenses based on material false information.
Right, right. I see this, a utility is different than a license. You're not going to be able just permanently shut it off and say, I'm sorry, you violated too many times, you're done. You would probably have a major legal action on your hands at that point. However, you could also bring legal action and get some court, a court order regarding how they're operating facility if they're refusing to comply and you just go through one corrective action after another.
So one thing that we could do within the agreement is we could consider, I'm looking for the term in my notes, and thank you for sending some of these questions ahead of time. We could, what was the?
Oh, add a provision that the city would have any remedies in law or equity related to any breach of the agreement.
So if there, if there is repeated breaches and repeated defaults, then we could seek remedy through civil means if we chose to do so. So it would strengthen our hand if we have a bad, a bad customer. But, and, and we have to point out that based on our research, that is not an indication with regards to Niagara. But if we have one in the future, and again, we're talking about the organs, which is applicable to all significant users, it would strengthen, it would strengthen our hand. And so that is something that we could, we could.
Isn't that always on the table though?
It would be something that actually we would include within the significant user agreement that would just say that we've got the right to pursue these additional remedies, so it would be part of the template.
But wouldn't it be just, isn't it just an understood right that we would have to pursue that? Does it need to be part of an agreement? I mean, I don't, I'm not objecting to it either way, it just seems like that would.
Generally penalties under violations of an ordinance are.
Limited to.
Limited to misdemeanors and you want.
So it would need to be part of, okay.
So you're authorizing yourself to have other options is what it comes down to. And when you have an agreement, typically if remedies identified in the agreement, you're limited to those. So that gives you additional options if you, if you need it.
Okay.
So back to the, if it exceeds an X percent?
Well, I guess if there's not a number that we're necessarily comfortable with, 'cause I think we're all, we're all novices at this, we're all throwing darts at the wall trying to come up with a number. What information would we'd like to get to help us make that decision?
I mean, is there a standard? It's gotta be created, there was, if the statewide would do something or.
Here's what we found when we were researching for this project. We're the only city that we have found that does this. We are going above and beyond, well above and beyond what the normal is with regards to protecting the public interest by having this ordinance which requires an SIU agreement. That's not very common out within the industry. None of our legal counsel nor none of our experts are familiar of a city that has one. Niagara has indicated to us that in all the cities that they operate within the United States, they've never encountered this either. So there really wasn't a great template for us to go to with regards to this. This was built largely from whole cloth.
Cool. I guess we're paving the way. Yeah, that's good. I mean, would the league or metro cities have any guidance? I mean, I don't know. I mean, again, it doesn't probably matter.
Where do we go to?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Really what it comes down to is what the city council is comfortable with, with a, the intent of this was to provide a contingency for the items that Rich described. Those variances that can't be predicted, oopses on the system, unpredicted things that might occur on the system over the course of the year, things that are non-intentional. And, you know, Niagara can give a number that they think is appropriate. At the end of the day, it's what the council feels is fair and appropriate and that can be applied generally across all, across all users so that they're treated equitably.
No, and, and I absolutely wanna double down on that last piece. Like this isn't about Niagara. This, I mean, this is where we're talking very high level, just the ordinance and let's get it right for that million gallon user a year or that five million gallon user a year or that food manufacturing or that car wash that has, you know, 15 stalls or something. It'd be a big car wash, okay?
Would be nice though.
So I don't know, I, I, I mean, I'm comfortable having a buffer, but I mean, 5%, you know, whatever. I thought zero was clean.
What is, what's, what restricts us from being able to go back and amend this at another point if we don't like what we put?
Nothing.
Nothing.
If your experience leads you to believe that other changes are necessary, it's your ordinance.
What happens to someone that's already governed under that ordinance? So their grandfather didn't have any older provisions or?
No, but their agreement would, you'd be subject to their existing agreement.
Okay.
So with that, I mean, I guess I would rather start at a lower threshold and bump it up than start higher and bring it down. And I, I'm not saying we have to start at zero, even though that's what I would say we should do, but start lower than, than come down and go up if users come in and say, this is just not gonna work 'cause of the fluctuations, 'cause the water qual, whatever it might be, and then consider it at that point.
Okay.
But.
Logically, that makes sense to me. Do we wanna throw out a number or do we wanna just leave it as that's a concern at this point and think about it more and talk about it at a future meeting or?
I've given my number.
Remind me?
Was your number zero or five?
I'm comfortable with that for right now.
Works for me.
I could go with that too. Sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
What's the number again?
Hundred and.
Five.
Okay. And if I could offer a suggestion to the council, even if the council intends to table items pending some other information, I would suggest to the council that you crunch through what you can because what you don't do today, you have to do still do tomorrow. And if you get to a point where you wanna be efficient later, the more you can chew off today, the better.
Dude, I've been waiting four and a half months. So then on to number three of the penalties. If a significant user fails to comply with emergency order regarding reduction in use, the city may immediately shut off the water to the property. Who monitors this? How easy is it? Is there a cost to this monitoring? Who pays for that cost? And/or is this self-reported usage?
So those are all excellent questions. On one, who monitors? At the end of the day, the responsibility is the, is the city. So the biggest thing is just the monthly utility metering. When we have those large users, they'll probably be evaluated as their own group, you know, exclusively. So we'll know looking at their monthly bill. So for instance, they're shut off or they've been reduced. Stephanie going through will go, oh, they're over, okay, we know that. If there are reason to, and if there's a reason to believe that within that monthly period that they're violating, or let's say the lights are on, they've got staff coming, you know, they've got shift changes, there's trucks coming and going, we can go read the meter at any time and we get very granular data from our meter readings. So we can read it at any point in time, pull the data and see if they're in violation with any particular emergency order that might be going on. So it's not incredibly difficult, it's additional work, but it would be, but to be honest, it's additional work when we have a watering ban and somebody has a really green lawn, you know, and we have to investigate that. So it's probably easier here with regards to cost. That's really the, to investigate, are you talking with the cost, the investigation process?
Just the monitoring, I mean, it's, yeah.
It's, it's stuff that we do on a regular basis right now with the 1,500 residential and additional commercial accounts that we, that we have within the community. And self-reported, could be. I mean, you might have and say, something happened, we're letting you know ahead of time and most businesses will let you know because they don't wanna get in trouble and they wanna let you know that something happened unintentionally. But again, ultimately that would fall back to the city to monitor and we have a number of means to do it. And we do it right now. For example, Stephanie, when we have utility billings go through, she prints out the accounts that have the highest readings because if somebody's residential account has 60,000 gallons in a month, something's wrong and we'll notify those people. This would just be doing it intentionally related to our, to that very specific group.
Sure, and, and maybe just a quick little follow-up to that. I mean, so there still is a lag though. It's a, you know, at least a month delay, you know, or by the time the readings come. It's not like live where we're seeing, you know, daily use or, you know, whatever. So if there are, if, you know, if there's a, an emergency order by, you know, the governor or DNR or us as a city determine that, I mean, it's, there's still a month and, and then thinking through a user like this and remind me what a daily user would be.
Well, I think we have to keep in mind that you have an ongoing operation and that would be, so if they were to do something, they would be operating in direct or contrary to their agreement. They'd be operating in direct contrary to city ordinance. And if it's like a governor's order, they would be operating in contrary to that. So that would be pretty, I won't use the word, I was thinking, pretty, um.
That's what I was gonna say.
Ballsy for a business to do that. So I think that's highly, highly unlikely and they would have to do it in a very clandestine fashion so that it simply wouldn't be noticed earlier than that. I mean, if you, and Niagara's the extreme, but if you have a Niagara, if they've got to run, they're gonna have to have shifts of employees coming and going. They're gonna have trucks coming and going from the facility because they're only gonna be doing it because they have production and it's going out the door. So I think it's not something that would necessarily go a month before you would notice it. The other thing too is if we have watering, if there's a situation where we have emergency restrictions in place, our staff is gonna be looking at how much water we're pumping out and how much water's going through the plant. And if we're doing some quick math and we see there's high volumes going through more than we would expect, that would lead us to go through and do other investigation, which might be just doing an interim meter read for the entire community to check it out. So to, to be honest, from a staff standpoint, we don't think that the monitoring on this is like a, like there's a big hole here. We have the tools in place and the technology and as we continue to grow with the city, those are only likely to improve.
My wife's telling me to move on. Last part here is with the amendments piece. You know, the, the, the piece that I don't know if I like about it, I mean, it's just, it's unlimited amendments and, and this can be any users and it's treated the exact same way. It's, it's very administrative, which, and I know like too, that that was the guidance provided by council of the staff when, when drafting this. I'm just wondering, is there anything we wanna consider when it comes to, you know, a certain number of amendments or, you know, I don't know what, just so that, you know, we're not looking at amendment every six months, every year, every, you know, I don't know what the timeframe is, but it just seems like we could have amendment after amendment after amendment and it's one user potentially doing all of these and now we're eating away at our water appropriation permit level and it's just gonna continue to get processed. I just, that causes me to pause for a second on that section. And I don't know if anybody else cares, but.
I haven't thought about it.
Are you looking for a response to that?
Sure.
Okay. So the, the ordinance as it's set up is set up as a shall be approved. If you check the boxes and we feel that we can safely provide you with it, we have capacity on the system, there's sufficient water supply, we have the appropriate permits in place for our total appropriation, what we can withdraw as a city and we can meet your demands, we will. So when anybody, so the thought process is if you're coming in for an amendment, those same issues of whether or not we have the capacity and the permitted ability to do it, those all still apply whether you're coming in for the initial permit or you're coming in for amendment. And so they would require the, the same review. With regards to any specific user that comes in, if we're talking about a Niagara, they're on the one extreme, they're limited. Their facility is only so large, they can only run so many lines. There is an upward capacity for what they can actually use. Now, they may come in more than just phase one, phase two. It's possible they might run one more line and come in for, that might be phase two, that's somewhere below that ultimate capacity. Or they might find out that as they're running, those initial lines maybe have a little bit more capacity and they wanna try and meet a market amount or whatever. The whole agreement is set up that they just can't dial up, they have to come in and get amendment. Everything pushes them back to an amendment. If you recall, in this jumping head in this, in, in the process, the first step is either have to do a corrective action plan or you have to apply for an amendment. So if there's a, could you tweak it or limit it in some other way? So if there's a, could you tweak it, or limit it in some other way? It really depend on, you'd asked the question of me previously, Josh, you know, what would it look like if we tweaked it a bit? What it would look like would depend on the rationale as to why you're tweaking it. So I don't know, I can answer that question. But we feel that the criteria for an initial permit are the same criteria we would apply for an amendment.
That's all I got on the ordinance.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Or Josh just pretty much summarize questions for everybody, and then some?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Josh had one other comment that I thought was reasonable, and it was related to the appeal, right to appeal process. Did you forget that one, Josh?
Oh, yes, I did. I was, see, I was listening to my wife. I'm trying to, you know, move along here. Pick my battles, so to speak. So, you know, it's highlighted, you know, within thirty days, we should get a written request for an appeal. You know, I've seen them range from X number of calendar days. You know, I personally like the, the shorter timeframes, like fourteen calendar days. So that's, I guess, what I would like to see, but I also know that the thirty days is in some of the, the DNR water-specific stuff, too. So maybe that's where it was kind of translated from, so.
I, I've seen both in my career as well. Really what it comes down to is what is a reasonable amount of time for the customer to receive the notice of violation, have time to basically process it, decide that they're going to appeal, and prepare those appeal materials. Thirty days seemed like a reasonable timeframe, because usually what I've seen is, which you've seen as well, it's either fourteen or, or thirty days. We defaulted to thirty days. If the council wanted to move it to fourteen days, staff doesn't have a specific opposition to that.
I know I don't need to make a motion, but then I would, I would suggest we move it to fourteen calendar days instead of the thirty days, or thirty, yeah, it doesn't say calendar. So if nothing else, too, I would change that to thirty calendar days. But I would prefer fourteen calendar.
Yeah.
I don't have a strong opinion on the number of days, but I know something that we deal with, or that I get to deal with in my regular work, is that if the fourteenth day, or the thirtieth day falls on a non-business day, does it automatically move to that Monday? Or Tuesday, if the Monday's a holiday?
The way we typically interpret it is it's, it's calendar days. I've interpreted in the past that if the, the, the fourteenth day is on a Sunday, you needed to have had it in on Friday. We could do it number of business days, because then that takes into account weekends and holidays. So you could, for instance, say.
Ten business days.
Fifteen business days, or ten business days, or twelve business days. I know that in our recent DNR work, fifteen business days was a number that was, that was used.
And then they just extended it by another fifteen business days. Yeah, I like ten business days, then.
No objection.
Yeah.
Objection here.
Okay.
Is that it?
I think so. Yeah, yeah. Unless Andrea remembers any more of my notes.
So questions on item B?
So item, item B is basically informational presentation on a number of items which were identified through our process to date. So that's really just presentation and questions by council.
Let's do it.
Do it.
Yep.
Okay, as Administrator Terry noted, item eight B is really entirely informational. No action items are required. These are items that were identified during the public input, public hearing process, and some research that staff conducted relating, related to various items for council consideration. This is really just kind of a recap, that in October of twenty twenty-two, the city received land use applications related to the plating, rezoning of properties within the Park I thirty-five industrial park, as well as application for a conditional use permit related to the proposed Niagara bottling facility on one of the lots within the industrial park. Public hearing was held before the Planning Commission on November twenty-ninth, with additional public input received by the city council on December fifteenth and December twentieth. During this process, on December seventh, a citizen petition requesting preparation of an EAW was submitted to the state's environmental quality board. And they did determine that to be complete, and assigned the decision for that to the DNR on December twelfth. During this time period, the city was restricted from making any land use applications until the DNR had issued their determination. On February twenty-seventh, city was advised on February twenty-eighth, the DNR issued their final decis-, decis-, decision and determination on the matter, determining that an EAW would not be required for the proposed Niagara water bottling project, and their record of decision provides detailed record of their findings. I don't think that I will go into detail. I know that the council has all reviewed that document, as well as probably many members of the public. Also, during the process, there were several concerns regarding the potential for Niagara bottling to draw unlimited amounts of water in perpetuity with no prioritization of the use of that water. Staff's opinion is that there are measures in place, in addition to the measures in place that we just reviewed with the ordinance. Minnesota State statute one oh three G two eight one, two nine one, two six one, all address the city's use of water and our requirement to report our water consumption to the DNR. The DNR water appropriations permit in itself places conditions on our water use as well. The Niagara would not simply be able to turn on as much water, utilize as much water as they wanted, based on state statute. The DNR water appropriation permit, the city's comprehensive plan, and our current city code. And in addition to safeguards being proposed, the significant water ordinance amendment that was just discussed, and the draft significant user agreement with additional securities regarding their use of our water, or the city's water. Also, identified as a concern was the potential for noise impacts to area residents. Due to those concerns, staff did request that Niagara repair a noise impact study for their proposed lot. This, the results of this study, or the study was completed by Kim Lee Horn, and the results outlined in the February twenty-second letter. Applicable noise standards, as contained in Minnesota statute, were identified in that letter, as well as noise goals, or levels established for the Niagara project, both AM and PM, based on Minnesota rules. So a daytime noise level of sixty and a evening level of fifty was established. The next exercise that was conducted was, there was a collection of existing noise levels, both AM and PM. There's a twenty-four hour measurement, which is typical in these types of studies. It did indicate that noise was generally in that range, that nighttime levels exceed the goals already. And the daytime levels were in the fifty-five, fifty-one to fifty-five decibel range. Those noise measurements were, one was on the north edge of the site, one was on the south edge of the site. Noise today is essentially from traffic, from the county roads and the state interstate. As for the proposed Niagara, Niagara facility, noise from rooftop AC, HVC units, employee and guest parking, and trucks were identified as the primary noise contributors for the project. The analysis predicted that noise levels at the residential land uses, north and east of the proposed development, are anticipated to range between forty and fifty-three during peak hours of operation. The analysis basically concluded that the anticipated noise levels are similar to those measured today, and the likelihood of noticeable increases in noise levels are low. The anticipated, there was a figure contained in the noise impact study that predicted the noise levels on a map, worst case, noise contours, peak noise contours were depicted. The analysis did go on to say that there are suggested possible visual screening along the northern edge of the site to help block the line of sight from the closest residences.
If we can refrain from comments, it would be helpful. It's kind of distracting up here. Thank you.
Potential lighting impacts to neighboring properties as a proposed, as a result of the proposed Niagara bottling facility was raised as a concern as well. The city does have standards related to exterior lighting, and they are contained in Title eleven dash four dash seven of the city code. Essentially, the, you know, kind of to summarize, lights must be hooded, any exterior parking lot lights must be hooded, and light shall not exceed one foot candle meter reading as measured from the center line of streets, and a half a foot candle at property lines. So a photometric lighting plan was submitted, and it revised to meet the city adopted standards. The lighting plan, in summary, meets the minimum requirements of the city code.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was trying to digest what somebody smarter than me asked a question about. So I'm just going to read. It, it's related to the sound and the noise. Sorry, to make you go back, I was just trying to, trying to figure out what I should ask. So according to the, the Kim Lee Horn report, it looks like the sound levels results are reported as hour-long averages, and they're one part of the standard, and then the other part is the L-ten standard. I know nothing what this even means, so you can correct me for those that know any of this language is. That can be exceeded for not more than six minutes in an hour, given truck traffic is the primary concern, which will tend to be uneven over time, and L-ten result is critical to assessing if sound mitigation is required. Does that make sense to anybody?
I'm not sure what the question was.
Yeah, what's the question?
Well, and, and, you know, the report refers to delivery trucks. If these trucks are, you know, semis and bigger trucks with, you know, obnoxious backward beeping stuff and things like that, does that, does this study, the sound-noise study, take into consideration the different types of trucks, the different types, types of patterns, the time of day, I mean, that kind of stuff, or should that be included in this type of study if it wasn't?
I thought it was, too. I thought I saw something in the report where it specifically said that.
And when speaking to the, you know, the L-fifty versus L-ten, you're right, how many, you know, minutes in an hour? The study or the goal was to use the lower decibel level. So for residential land uses, which we're, that's what our goal is, the sound standards for residential land uses, you know, using that L-ten, you could go up to sixty-five decibels. That would be the standard. Our goal would be to be at the lower standard of, of sixty.
We can always come back to it during the preliminary plat stuff.
Okay, to summarize the lighting impacts, the Niagara has submitted a lighting photometric plan that meets city requirements. There was one question during previous public hearings regarding lighting on the towers, or on the silos that are proposed under the conditional use permit. In Niagara, I know stated this at the, one of the meetings, but there are no lights proposed on the towers. There are lights proposed on the building adjacent to the towers to light the area around the towers, but the towers would not be lit. Following public comment, city staff also requested that Niagara submit visual renderings demonstrating what the proposed building would be expected to look like from various vantage points. Two vantage points were chosen, one on Deuce Road, and one at a residence located to the south of the property. And. These are some renderings that were provided. This is purely informational. There were, the city did also receive public comment regarding their proposed development impact on the Scott, the natural area corridor map that was identified in Scott County's twenty forty comprehensive plan. And natural area corridors are depicted and further described in a chapter in the Scott County comprehensive plan. This, the natural area corridors map and program was created by Scott County fairly recently, and the intent was to try to work with developers to preserve pockets of native communities that are otherwise unprotected within proposed developments on a voluntary basis through some kind of partnership. Admittedly, in speaking with the staff in the Planning and Environmental Health Department at Scott County, they said this has not been a very successful program. I note that the Scott County comprehensive plan guides growth and development in the rural area, does not necessarily apply to the city. That said, we do work together, and this map is also included in the city's comprehensive plan for reference, as well as a couple of other maps that have been created by the DNR or other agencies that might identify special natural features that might be worthy of preservation. So there is an area you can see on this map, I circled in red, that seems to identify the area around the development site. So at that point, you do further research to see what could be there. Is there really a sensitive plant community in this area? And in consultation with staff at Scott County, environmental staff, you know, and looking at the history of the property, staff's opinion that's, the vast majority of this property, with the exception of a small tree area on the northeast corner of the Niagara site, has been farmed since the nineteen thirties. So there likely are not any sensitive plant or other communities. And I, it's my opinion that the map depicted, the natural corridors map, really identifies areas to the south and a little bit to the east of the subject property. This is a nineteen fifty-seven aerial photo. You can see it was farmed nineteen seventy, two thousand two. There was also questions from area residents regarding screening, landscape screening on the property. This is a, the landscape plan that has been submitted. The landscape plan includes three hundred and thirty-two trees, a combination of coniferous and deciduous trees, three hundred and twenty-seven shrubs, and eighty-seven perennials and grasses. This landscape plan was amended or enhanced following the initial public hearings. There were an additional, I think, a hundred and seven. This landscape plan was amended or enhanced following the initial public hearings. There were an additional, I think, a hundred and seven trees, mostly coniferous screening trees on the north, north side of the site, added in response to public concerns regarding landscaping and screening. This is just a blow up of the landscape plan on the north end of the site and I've kind of color coded. The green are all coniferous trees, which would provide screening during the winter months as well. And anything in a brown tone is, is more of a deciduous tree. Essentially, it is my opinion that they've shown plantings in every possible location on the lot, at least on the north side of the lot. There is an easement that runs through here for sanitary sewer lines, so we typically don't allow plantings within those types of easements. Outside of that, there's as many trees as I can possibly plant on the northern portion of the site, as well as surrounding the parking lot. This is the southern portion of the site, which also has a fairly large number of trees, more than we would typically see. The plans submitted do also show some security fencing that, on the plans is proposed as eight-foot chain link, black chain link, I believe, fence surrounding the parking area. I've identified that proposed fencing in the red and blue lines here. Staff would suggest that the chain link fence on the northern portion of the lot and the northeast portion of the lot be changed to some type of opaque fencing material that doesn't allow truck headlights to shine through. There were resident reports at both the planning commission, city council and staff received reports from a city resident who had visited a Niagara bottling facility in Oklahoma City, expressing concern with long lines of traffic at that facility, trucks stacking on local roads. Staff did reach out to Niagara staff. We reached out to the plant director at the Oklahoma City that said they have inbound outbound lanes that are never backed up. And that they are unaware of any problem related to stacking on the local road. After hearing the conflicting reports from the resident and the plant director, city staff asked our public safety or chief of police to research this item and asked for all parking complaints related to the Niagara bottling facility. And he did so and basically in, although, he asked for the last ten years' worth of calls. The facility was constructed in two thousand and eighteen, so there were no records prior to that. Chief Jewell noted that there were no parking complaints with semi trucks attributed to this address and there were all no, also no parking complaints attributed to Niagara itself. So staff also researched aerial photos as we could to see if there was any visible truck traffic and we were not able to view anything. This is a picture of the local road in front of the Niagara facility in Oklahoma City. There were also recent, during a recent city council meeting, there was also public comment regarding the Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin Niagara facility specifically noted were problems with long lines of trucks queuing on local roads and a number of significant, number of police calls to the local police department regarding these complaints. Again, we shared these concerns with Niagara. Who reached out to their plant director, who did state that during a expansion, they did experience some problems with truck queuing into the site, which has since been resolved. And again, we had Chief Jewell reach out to the police department in Pleasant Prairie, who really substantiated the, the same. There were several calls to the facility, I think during the years twenty eighteen to twenty twenty during that expansion, but the records clerk at Pleasant Prairie said the calls have, they haven't had any calls this year and there were two in the previous year. So the the concern has been remedied at that location.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Is there anything related to, or in the significant user agreement or in any ordinance or whatever, I mean, I assume we have normal traffic violations we could issue or, I mean, what would be some of the remedies if, like, there was traffic issues noted or complaints made? What would be the, the process to fix said concerns currently?
I noted that both the police department, while the first one in Oklahoma City, there is.
You have to speak relatively close to the microphone, chief.
No problem. All right. So Oklahoma City, there just wasn't a noted problem. Apples to oranges situation, that's a huge industrial park. Could have been numerous other companies that caused the issue there. Non-residential area, so it wasn't blocking homes or causing any situations like that. Pleasant Prairie very much so saw the decline once the Niagara plant was addressed, the issue. They addressed it on its, on its own. And we, same with any other crime issue, if there was an ordinance about parking on the roadway, we would take corrective action. Citations, warnings. As you know, our philosophy is education-based. We'd work with Niagara. We've said that before. Open direct lines of communication. If we identified an issue, we'd work directly with them to solve it. And that's exactly what happened in Pleasant Hills.
And I forgot to ask a question. You don't have to go back to the landscaping. With the trees, and I appreciate the, the detail and the amount of trees that, I mean, I, I think that is, was a significant concern of residents in the area, maybe some of ours. So I appreciate the effort that went into that and the thought that went behind adding a lot of that landscaping. Is there any requirements and or any, you know, are they six-inch trees that are going to take twenty-five years to, to grow up or, I mean,
Sure.
But I don't want to minimize or diminish the effort and the thought that went into that, but it's just, I'm curious.
That's a, a good question. All coniferous trees are specked at six feet in height, bald and burlapped. And all deciduous trees are two and a half inch diameter, which is pretty standard for screening or as bald as big as you can, are typically planted. Make no mistakes. The building is thirty-five to forty feet in height. And it's higher than County Road Two. So it will take a long time for those trees to provide actual screening of the facility itself.
So when we, when you look at screening, screening is not intended to completely cover the building. It's intended to screen the activity that's occurring on site, address issues such as lights and other activity at a pedestrian or ground level. When you're talking, it's no different. We've had similar conversations with apartment buildings. If you have a three-story apartment building, there's no tree you're going to plant that's going to be large enough to hide the building. So when we're talking about screening, what is the purpose of the screening? And it's meant for obscuring at a ground level.
Well, and, and I appreciate that. And I think that that's reasonable. And then with the fencing being opaque, I think that helps address some of that.
During public comment, there were several comments regarding Niagara bottling being involved with lawsuits with other municipalities. The city attorney's office assisted us in researching this claim. Campbell Knutson found two cases discovered where Niagara bottling was involved in litigation, one in Groveland, Florida, and one was a pre-settlement agreement involving the city of Phoenix, Arizona. The city attorney concluded that the only matter Niagara appeared to be in violation of any local requirement is in the Phoenix settlement agreement. And that this single instance of a violation involving a fairly low penalty from nine years ago does not seem unusual for a national company operating in multiple cities across the U.S. And I know in your packet, there was additional information regarding those. Impacts to the Prairie du Chene Aquifer, impacts area wells, impacts to the Vermillion River and Calcarious Fens were caused by pumping additional groundwater to accommodate Niagara were raised as concerns and specifically members of the public cited two studies. One was referred to Lakeville Well Number Three Aquifer Test Report. Another one is, was commissioned by Scott County. The studies were referenced and cited as evidence that the proposed pumping increase would negatively have negative impacts. To assess these suggestions, Bolton and Mank hired LRE Water to review the studies and provide opinions regarding their relevance to the city's current and future groundwater pumping. And LRE's opinion regarding the Lakeville Well Number Three study, I'm going to read these into the record. These are summaries. The hydrology of Lakeville Well Number Three test site located approximately seven miles northeast of the city's wellfield and surrounding area is significantly different from the hydrology at and adjacent to the city's wellfield. Therefore, the results of the Lakeville Three well study are not representative of the hydrologic condition in the vicinity of the city's wellfield and cannot be used to compare potential impacts to the Vermillion River from Niagara bottling. The Prairie du Chene Aquifer in the area of the city's wellfield is not in direct hydraulic connection with the water table aquifer and surface waters in the area of the city's wellfield. Given the distance and lack of direct connection to the Vermillion River, pumping at the city's current and projected rates is not likely to have significant effect on the Vermillion River. In relation to the Scott County study, I'm going to read these four points into the record. The Scott County study took a very conservative approach and is valuable in that it illustrates what the potential worst-case scenario pumping may be on the Prairie du Chene Aquifer water levels in Scott County, including the areas of the city. The Scott County's studies, two-week peak flow for the city was approximately six point five times more than the city's current projection of three hundred and sixty-five million gallons. Therefore, the drawdown in the aquifer and the potential impact to surface waters is likely exaggerated in the study as compared with more realistic drawdown, given actual use requirements. Even so, if the future use projection in the model holds true, the results show that groundwater resource availability from the Prairie du Chene Aquifer can meet the city's future demand projections. The conclusion is the water level in the Prairie du Chene Aquifer is a quarter mile from the city's wellfield are estimated to still be a hundred and twenty feet above the top of the aquifer, even using Scott County's study's conservative estimate of drawdown from high municipal and other build-out pumping rates. Additionally, the amount of drawdown in the Prairie du Chene Aquifer will decrease with distance from the city's pumping wells. Therefore, draw, drawdown in the aquifer at the Vermillion River from pumping in the city's well is anticipated to be insignificant. The city's projected withdrawal volumes are significantly less than the historical use of other nearby municipal users, indicating the aquifer is likely capable of providing the city's twenty thirty projected volume of three hundred and sixty-five million gallons and future demands.
So just a couple of follow-up points on that memo. So, and I just want to read a couple of things too that I found pertinent to this. So I'll just read them. And these are quoted in the memo. So on page one ninety, one ninety-one of the packet or one or two of the memo. In addition to the analysis conducted by city consultants, hydrologists, hydrogeologists with the Minnesota DNR will conduct similar analyses when reviewing the city's current water appropriations permit increased request. DNR staff will review impact to the Prairie du Chene Jordan Aquifer, area wells, Calcarious Fens and the Vermillion River. The analysis will be conducted by a professional geologist within the DNR. And there will also be internal peer review of the geologist's findings before an increase to the city's appropriation permit will be granted. So that again reinforces, I think, our justification to wait for this appropriate appropriation permit to come back. Page three of the other memo, page one ninety-four of the packet. At this time, it is unknown what long-term groundwater level threshold the DNR would enforce on the city's wellfield for the protection of the Prairie du Chene Jordan Aquifer. Ultimately, city-specific aquifer pumping tests and resulting data analysis will be necessary to evaluate the effects of pumping the Prairie du Chene Jordan Aquifer to determine maximum safe yields and what future demand can be targeted. Further analysis may be required by the DNR to establish safe yield thresholds and any permit conditions such as monitoring water levels for protection of the aquifer, surface waters and private well owners. So to me, that is suggesting additional testing should be necessary. I'll just say is necessary or could be necessary to be fully informed. And then page three or four of the other Scott County memo, the Scott County portion of it states, quoted, thirteen years have passed since the completion of the Scott County study and therefore significantly more is known about the groundwater use and development patterns within the DAP. Although the modeling approach and science are likely valid, the flow volume data and projections of the Scott County study need to be updated if they are going to be used to accurately assess groundwater sustainability at this time. So again, I think this is where, you know, that additional water supply plan or updates or just additional studies may be necessary. And lastly, and I'll be quiet, page four or five of the LRE Scott County memo. Ultimately, city-specific aquifer pumping tests, tests and resulting data analysis will be necessary to accurately complete a localized analysis of the Prairie du Chene Jordan Aquifer to determine maximum safe yields and future demand targets. This may be required by the DNR to establish safe yield thresholds and any permit conditions and is unknown at this time what the threshold the DNR would use, blah, blah, blah. And again, just reinforcing the fact that, you know, even in this memo, while some of those things were, were noted, it's also ultimately saying that additional, more updated pumping tests and resulting data analysis will be necessary to, I think, be fully informed. So just wanted to point that out.
Is the council looking for any feedback from?
Yeah, if there's any comments or any follow-up thoughts, go ahead.
Well, and I guess my only comment was, you know, this is in the DNR's hands, so they can choose to do or not do whatever they want. But if they choose to not do something, then, you know, based on this, I think we should consider requiring additional stuff. But again, we can wait for the DNR to do their job.
So Dave, do you have any commentary with regards to context or interpretation of the report by council member?
Sure. Great questions. The, you know, standard protocol typically for us as a consultant with any new appropriation increase or, or new well is to, you know, design a, a pumping test on that well to determine the capacity. And that information provides aquifer parameters, you know, how the aquifer responds. The other thing it provides is water chemistry information at that higher rate, which again, that comes, that, that becomes important when you look at water treatment at that higher rate. Well performance, how that well performs at a higher rate because efficiencies sometimes change at higher rates. And over the long term, wellfield optimization, you know, if you have multiple wells operating at a higher rate, you know, what is the, the best way they're going to perform? How are you going to operate those? So that is typically what we would do for, you know, a situation like this. And again, if, if DNR comes in and, and would require something above and beyond that, you know, you don't want to duplicate tests, right? So, so, you know, at that, at that point in time, you know, potentially waiting on a DNR response may be, may be applicable.
So Dave, you talked a lot about requiring those testing as part of a new well. We're not proposing a new well at this time and our current wells have capacity to serve, to serve our immediate capacity. We do, and we've reported to the council in the future, that we think that with a large user coming on, it'll accelerate future, the need for future wells. So how does that pump testing relate to a situation where you'd be using existing wells as opposed to a future well, what we might, that we might do in a few years?
Sure. Yeah. So again, with the increase in the appropriation, existing wellfield, not a new wellfield, or a new well, that would still be a consideration, right? To evaluate that increased pumping rate. To evaluate that increased pumping rate, you know, and then also long-term, you know, say a new well does not go in, you can still evaluate that information, determine, you know, long-term growth or future potential demands and how that might be met.
How much, let's say the DNR decides that they're not going to require additional testing or study, they don't think it's necessary, you know, communication with them, they suggest, you know, you can't just have some, you can't just have some random person go do these tests because they're complicated tests, they're complicated analyses, you know, what is the cost to that? What, I mean, and is that something that the city would bear or is that something that an applicant would pay for and/or we could pass along those costs or?
So the testing that we would be doing is related to our permit, and that's a system cost. We typically, and I think there would be, in my opinion, would be difficult to find the nexus because, so if you're talking about, can we, let's get right to it, can we charge Niagara for the cost for doing that? We have the capacity on the system today to serve them. The reason we would be doing this work is to create capacity for future users. So that would be paid for by the system, and we charge fees to collect revenue to help pay for those types of system, those types of system costs. If we were doing an improvement like a well that was specifically done at one point exclusively for a user, or they were to benefit, we, it might be reasonable to charge them for a proportionate cost relative to their benefit for a future user. But we already have the, but we already have that capacity on the system, and the fees that they pay, their connection fees, their trunk fees, their user fees are what they're paying to support those user fees, just like everybody else on the system.
You good?
Okay. At the last council meeting, Dr. Carrie Jennings provided a presentation regarding groundwater tunneling.
I thought we were on the Dave Hume presentation.
Okay.
Sorry. There was a map on page 223. And on the top right graph, looks like there's a steady decline since 2020 in, in our water, I don't know, I can't remember if that was the levels or whatever, but it looks like from 2020, we're, we're at a pretty steady, not steady, it's at a decline. You can, it's a noticeable one to somebody that's inexperienced that's looking at it.
Sure. And I went back and reviewed the presentation. There were two hydrographs on there, one's from monitoring well about four and a half miles to the southeast of here. I believe that's the one from, I think the data records 2015 through present. And then the one on the left side is up by Prior Lake, about 12 miles away, and that was a longer period of time from 40 years, 1980 to present. Okay, so if you look at the one to the southeast, that period from 2015 to present, the drop there over the last couple of years is maybe a foot, foot and a half to two feet, okay? If you compare that to the hydrograph with the longer record, the 40-year period, and if you look at the latter part of that graph, again, 2020 to present, you'll, you'll see a similar drop, you know, maybe one, two, maybe three feet, okay? So comparing those, we can more or less say that the precipitation events, and if you look on the graph on the left, we have precipitation plotted with the water level. The fluctuation, that one to two to three feet appears to be related to, you know, the drought condition we've experienced over the last year and a half, okay, or two years. However, looking at that longer period, you'll see, you know, levels bounce back up, okay? And, and over that 40-year period, in that graph on the left, levels have actually increased. You know, the general trend has been upward over the last 40 years, and that, that well is actually located in a, in a much higher area of high-capacity pumping, you know, related to Prior Lake, Shakopee, you know, much higher development versus the one that we have to the southeast, four and a half miles away.
And, and so you answered part of my question too. So in that bottom middle graph, the four and a half miles to the southeast, plus whatever you said, the Prior Lake one is further away.
About 12 miles, yeah.
And I think we've heard even, you know, a quarter of a mile can impact the accuracy or the, the information that we gather. Would it make sense to do well testing within the actual vicinity then? Because that seems like a long distance, and there could be a lot of differences between how groundwater gets recharged or doesn't, and there's, you know, whatever. So it just seems to me then maybe an observation well would be justified closer.
Yeah, typically, DNR's compliance as part of the permit will require an observation well in the vicinity of the wellfield. You know, if that's not required, that's certainly something the city could consider.
We, we monitor levels in our own wells, it's part of the process. We monitor that data, and we have actually provided updated data as part of the appropriation permit directly from our wells, so.
We do have a dedicated monitoring well in town also.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Go ahead.
At the last city council meeting, there's a presentation regarding groundwater tunneling. Dr. Jennings provided interesting information on the glacial geologic history and superficial geologic setting in the area, and talks specifically about glacial tunnel valleys. As a result of these valleys, Dr. Jennings indicated that there's a potential for direct connection between the Prairie du Chene Aquifer and the sand and gravel aquifer that serve the headwaters of the Vermillion and other surface water bodies. Therefore, by pumping the Prairie du Chene Aquifer by the city, there exists potential to impact these surface waters. The glacial tunneling described by Dr. Jennings are near the grade surface and are filled with sand and gravel. In the city's wellfield and to the east, approximately three to four miles, these glacial tunnel valleys are separated from the Prairie du Chene Aquifer by very low permeable clay glacial till layers, significantly reducing the potential for connection and thus, and thus impact on the surface waters. In LRE's, in LRE Water's opinion, the information presented by Dr. Jennings does not raise additional concern regarding the Prairie du Chene, Jordan Aquifer capacity to support the project, nor will the additional pumping by the city wells significantly impact surface waters in the wellfield area.
Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, we have, you know, Dr. Jennings's conclusions saying that there may be some connections. We see in this that there may not be some connections, and I swear to God, there was another place that said that there is a likelihood of all of this stuff being interconnected. Would it be justified or is there, how do you, how do you figure out which? It seems like conflicting info to me then, like I'm hearing from, you know, one person who's smarter than I am, from an organization who's smarter than I am. I don't, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm stuck.
Yeah, I, I understand. First of all, we, you know, appreciate any new information we can get, right? We're, as geologists, scientists, we're always refining our conceptual ideas, thoughts, models as, as to what's out there. So the information Dr. Jennings presented was fantastic, was great to have that information. We took a, you know, an additional look at that just to say, okay, because we want to look at our information and make sure it matches conceptually or builds upon what we have already provided. And we have done that. We, we established or constructed two additional cross-sections, and, and I can certainly present those if you'd like to see the details. And, you know, the thing we were looking for is, you know, the connection of these superficial sands and gravels, very shallow, and direct connection or indications of direct connection with the Prairie du Chene, Jordan Aquifer. So the cross-sections we developed included wells in those tunnels, and yes, we agree, there is sands and gravels at the surface as described. In places, that sand may go down into the Prairie du Chene, we do not see any evidence of that, but it's not to say that it's not there. But for the majority of that area, we feel there is significant clay till, impermeable low till that separates superficial sands and gravels that would be connected to the Vermillion River or the headwaters that, that protects those from the pumping. So that's our conclusions at this point. If, if there are, you know, connections in this general area, we feel like they would be minimal, and the pumping of the Prairie du Chene would have, again, you know, probably a very insignificant effect on the headwaters. Now, as you move downstream or down gradient hydraulically towards Lakeville, you know, four to five miles away, that is where we agree sands and gravels and the Prairie du Chene are hydraulically connected and are discharging to the river. And that would be equivalent to kind of the study that was done in the Lakeville area. But again, as, as the city is pumping, you know, that cone of depression, as it radiates outward from the wellfield area, you know, is exponentially smaller. And the, you know, the significance of the drawdown four or five miles away is very small.
Okay. Just wanted to touch again on traffic. There is a lot of discussion regarding traffic. We did ask Bolton and Mank Traffic Engineers to assist us with updating a traffic analysis specific to Niagara. So I want to be clear, I'm going to describe it the best that I can, and I have people that are smarter than me to add if I mess up or add in general. Today, intersections and, and traffic and delays are measured in grades, A through F. Some are considered acceptable, A, B, C. You know, F is considered unacceptable, and that unacceptable, unacceptable typically relates to the seconds of delay experienced at intersection. Today, the most recent traffic data that we collected, detailed data around the interchange is from the late fall of 2001, I believe it was November or December of 2001, 2021, The, the model shows acceptable levels of delay at all intersections at that time. We, no historic growth, every year there's increased growth on the system, just from growth from other communities, from New Prague, from Montgomery, from Lonsdale that use the transportation system and specifically this interchange or Lakeville for that matter, or the surrounding townships. As they grow, traffic increases and it affects the interchange. So using those projections going forward, the model shows that even without any development by 2026, we're going to start to experience some unacceptable levels of the delay, particularly in one movement on the northbound ramp. Modeling Niagara's traffic, and we use their employee counts, their truck counts, adding that traffic to the system doesn't change the grade of what would happen without their development. There will be increased delays, but not, it doesn't change the grade of any of the movements or any of the four movements that we track, AM and PM movements. Not sure if that's, if anybody's following that, but kind of the conclusions are the traffic operations at the interchange are anticipated to degrade to unacceptable levels of service on several movements by 2026, with assumed background traffic growth and no development. That's no development in the city at all, regardless if it's at the interchange or in the city. Niagara bottling reduces the industrial park trip generation by 23% upon buildout. Comparing that to what we would expect to see on a 38, an approximate 30-acre parcel, their traffic is less than we would typically see from an industrial 30-acre parcel. So it adds minimal traffic to the interchange during peak hours as their traffic is distributed throughout the day. The majority of traffic added during peak hours of the forecast year 2026 is really due to background growth on the entire system. Added development traffic is anticipated to increased delays experienced at the interchange, but is not shown to dramatically increased delays in comparison with a no-development scenario.
Dave, do you remember what the, what the failing time rate was?
That tricks it, that tips it into a F?
Yeah.
Mike?
That's 50 seconds.
50 seconds.
50 seconds, okay, thank you.
Okay. I, the council is well aware, but I just wanted to state one more time, the bottleneck at the interchange is not a surprise to the city. It's something that city staff has been working on for more than a decade, dating back to at least 2010 in joint studies with Scott County. In 2015 and 16, all agencies worked together to look at what might be the best alternative for replacing the interchange, and came up with this preferred future interchange design, which was a diverging diamond. We are continually trying to advocate and bring attention to our partners at the state and county. The county's a great partner, they're always helpful and have assisted us with most recent studies. Actually, county funded the diverging diamond interchange design study in 2015, 2016, and we're continually trying to work with MINDOT and raising awareness about this interchange. Do you have any questions on traffic while we have Scott County and traffic engineers in there?
Are we going to get into the preliminary plat stuff tonight? I mean, because my, my question is referred to this design, I mean, we heard at the I-35 Solutions Meeting that it may or may not be the preferred design now, they have to do additional analysis, there isn't an official MINDOT recommendation or like stamp of, yep, we think that's it. Would, if, let's say the design is completely different, would it still comply with, or would, would it still work with what we're looking at for, you know, this application or what we're looking to do, or how do we handle that?
I can't totally answer that question. I know Ryan Wilson was on the Zoom call. Ryan is the South Area Manager for the Metro MINDOT District. He's on the call if he is available to raise his hand to speak to this. I've had subsequent conversations with Ryan, who indicated this still very likely may be the design. This design was specifically picked, Tom and I and a number of people in this room were involved with this study because it required the least amount of right-of-way. So we have the least amount of cost in acquiring right-of-way, which is a very significant part of cost of road improvement projects. It had the least environmental impacts, least impacts on wetlands and things of that nature. And it could be built, at least at the time, it was thought that it could be built under traffic. So people could just continue to utilize the bridge while they built another half of the bridge, and so it could be built under traffic. Those are kind of the three, as well as I think it was the most affordable option at the time.
Was it, what was the name of the person, Ryan?
Ryan Wilson.
He's got his hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, apologies, I couldn't stay for this portion of the meeting. Could you repeat the specific question, just so I can be sure I answer it?
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious, you know, this is Josh. If the previously or currently preferred design is the diverging diamond layout, I'm just, from maybe what current standards are now, fast forward seven, eight years, however long it's been, to fast forward to when MINDOT would actually help us out and approve something here, God willing, do we think that this design still might be a preferred design? And if it's not, I guess my question or concern or whatever would be is, if it's changed significantly, how could it impact just what we're looking to approve? And if we're not approving anything tonight, I guess, you know, that's where I have less concerns about it, but. concerns about it, but.
Sure, thank you. I understand the question, I think, and I can follow up if needed here. Yeah, the way I would characterize the design is it's a great effort by the county and city to produce a design, you know, really the first step in the planning process is to create a document or what you're seeing on the screen here, you know, a plan, a concept that can be kind of the, the goal. So the city can look towards guiding its development, it can have its eye for its properties if necessary, the county and state can start to think about what the long-range plan is. And as Renee pointed out, there is a planning, we call it a planning geometric layout that is this design. And the way I would characterize it would be as funding started to materialize for a project, just based on timing, you would need to revisit standards, you know, how has the traffic evolved in Elko and the surrounding areas that might tweak the design. I am not a detailed design engineer, but I am not seeing anything on the screen that would be, you know, raising red flags. I think we would be able to work towards something like this design. And as we were allowing participants to see this design this evening, they kind of often asked why this design, and Renee hit that well, that it really is about solving some of the key movements that are, you know, that we are being experienced out there, the, the turn movements on to and off the highway. So, yeah, no, that's kind of a short summary, happy to elaborate on any of those points if, if helpful.
So, Ryan, this is Tom. So you're not thinking that it's likely all of a sudden it would turn into a four-leaf clover interchange or something like that, that would have a radically different footprint from what it's laid out today?
Yeah, that wouldn't be a decision that we would make unilaterally by any stretch. I think it would be unlikely that would be a design that would be the right context or treatment for this location. But yeah, that would not be something we would do unilaterally. We would want to do that cooperatively with, you know, the city and, and county, any changes made to the concept you see on the screen.
So you're not, you're not giving it the stamp of approval tonight? We can't go on record to say that MINDOT supports this design, we can move forward, but it, it, it doesn't appear to cause any major red flags in your mind at this point in time, based on the information you know?
Agree, and, and to be clear, we did put, you know, agency signatures to the study layout. That wasn't an approved, you know, environmental document done, geometric layout, staff approved. But yeah, it had the agency's support back in 2016. And again, I think that would be our, our starting point as we move forward to a future project.
All agencies did enter into a memorandum of agreement that we would guide development in accordance with this plan and right-of-way limitations, and that's what we've done. I will wait for the mayor, maybe, for item 8C.
We didn't want to start without you.
Oh, I tried to tell you, go ahead, keep it going.
Okay.
There's only a two-second pause.
Oh, all right.
We're on to 8C.
Yeah, concluded the informational items, we're on to item 8C regarding approval of the industrial park preliminary plat.
Can I jump back to a question on the last topic? Not, not actually specific to, to traffic, but when we were talking about the environmental piece, the pumping of the water. What exactly is the role of the city when it comes to that? The DNR approves the appropriations permit. What is our role in terms of approving water going out?
I'd like to defer to the city engineer for that comment.
Basically, review any application, whether it be for an agreement for a significant user or a developer that's looking to do a certain number of lots. We look at our supply, meaning our wells. We look at our distribution system, which is our pipes. We look at our treatment plant, can we make that much water? And we look at our storage, is it consistent with guidelines for the recommended amount of storage? And compare that to the change in use that would happen from whatever that application is. So our role is really to say, can our system deliver this water without hurting our existing customers and maintaining whatever cushion we need for peak days and that type of thing? And that's kind of where it stops. If we need to increase our appropriation or permit, we submit an application to DNR, provide whatever information they request or that we think would be helpful, and work with them until we have a resolved new appropriation amount.
So going back to a point Josh had made about requiring additional testing and studies, is that something that would be within our purview to do, or is that something that the DNR would be required to do?
Could be either.
Could be either, okay.
They could say, we, we want to do this pumping test before we would grant this amendment to see, for whatever purpose it might be, to see if there's maybe impacts on neighboring wells or capacity or whatever it would be. Or we can decide to do those on our own, for our own purposes, some of the benefits which Dave described a little bit ago.
That's all I need, I just wanted to clarify that. All right, sorry, any other questions before we do move on?
Well, I just kind of want to review real quick the action items under 8C related to the industrial park. I'm going to make a quick comment. We've always referred to the name of the plat as a Park I-35 industrial park. Scott County, when they reviewed the plat, had some issue with the name and the hyphen in the title. So we're going to interchange, the plat name has been now changed to Interstate 35 Industrial Park, so they could be used interchangeably during our presentation. But the count, related to Ryan Companies, Ryan Company U.S.'s application are the application, or a resolution approving a notice of decision on a wetland replacement plan, a resolution approving a preliminary plat for Interstate 35 Industrial Park, a findings of fact, adoption of findings of fact regarding a rezoning and ordinance rezoning the proposed Lot 1 from UR to I-1. And then there is also a request for a grading authorization permit to allow grading to begin within the plat. Would you like me to proceed with reviewing these, of these items?
Counsel?
Sure, I have questions because, I mean, yeah, go for it.
Okay. Okay, just a quick location map to, again, document the location of the property that's proposed to be platted. There is a application for wetland replacement. Point 54 acres of permanent wetland impacts are proposed and essentially needed for road are being requested for construction of road and public utilities. You can see one on the north is for a turn lane and approaching eastbound right turn lane into the development. One that will provide a small impact for a private driveway that will be relocated for the business uses at the corner there, and then two to the south for the new road in the industrial park. Wetland replacement is required to be two to one. Replacement is proposed by purchase of wetland credits in a wetland bank, 1.08 acres. The technical evaluation panel, which is representation from multiple agencies, use Army Corps of Engineers, Scott Soil and Water, DNR if applicable, county's consultant wetland specialist have reviewed the application and recommended approval, recommended that it meets the sequencing requirements contained in the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act. So the council is being asked to adopt Resolution 2316, approving this notice of decision and wetland replacement plan.
So I'm just curious, so on page 245 of the packet, it has point 54, point 54 acres impacted. On page 329, it has point 30 acres impacted, and on page 497, it has point 88 acres impacted. What's the difference between the three numbers? And I was reading them in three different days, so.
And I apologize that I have not researched that question. Is the point 88 may be related to Niagara's application?
Maybe, maybe they're different.
Yeah, they're two separate applications.
Wetland application.
Yeah.
There's just three different numbers completely, and that's where I was like getting so confused of which one is this one for.
Well, this is the absolute impact proposed for Park I-35. And this would just be impacts that Ryan Companies would do as part of the development. This has nothing to do with Niagara's site. Any wetland impacts that they are proposing, which they are, are under a separate application. Okay, moving on to the request for preliminary plat approval and the request for rezoning. I'm going to do this pretty high level. I have probably 50 slides that represented the planning commission that I could present to you, but that was not my intent tonight. The overall plat is 119.39 gross acres. It's proposed, one lot containing 28.09 acres is being proposed to be platted, and three additional outlots, Outlet A and C would be retained for future development. Outlet B would be conveyed to the city, contains its stormwater pond, that's typical in development. The property is currently inside the city limits. There's also a request for rezoning. It's currently owned, the entire property is currently zoned urban reserve, which is typically, it's kind of a preservation zoning district, and things inside the city that don't have access to municipal utilities are typically zoned urban reserve. But when urban utilities and municipal utilities become available, the city should consider rezoning those properties to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. At this time, there's only a request to rezone Lot 1 to I-1 industrial, which is consistent with the comp plan. Planning Commission did hold public hearings regarding both of these items on November 29th. They have recommended approval on both of these items to the city council. Their findings are outlined in a findings of fact and a recorded decision related to the rezoning, and their findings are also contained in a resolution approving the, approving the preliminary plat. I did want to note that there's a condition number 23 that the planning commission recommended that the city should not consider final plat approval of the plat until the DNR appropriations permit is authorized. Staff was recommending if you chose to adopt the earlier ordinance number 273, that this condition could be removed. But in the event that the council chose not to adopt the significant user ordinance 273, this condition should remain on the recommendation of the city attorney. And then moving on to the request, the authorized grading permit. The city code states that if approved by the city engineer, grading of the site may occur after approval of a preliminary plat and a grading agreement. In this case, the city engineer has reviewed the grading plan for the plat and the Niagara site, and has recommended approval of the grading, subject to the addition of a berm on the north side of the proposed Niagara site. The city attorney has drafted a grading agreement for your consideration, and Ryan Companies has had the opportunity to review that and has signed that agreement. The agreement does also require financial securities in case they started to grade and there was some type of corrective action that we needed to take. So securities are in place. That concludes the requested action for Park I-35.
Any questions or comments or follow-ups? Josh?
No, I mean, I think, I think quite a few of them are addressed in other sections, including the interchange and traffic. I mean, maybe this is a stupid question, but it says there's unable, if unable to confirm the, or, there's unable to confirm the presence of a drain tile if can encounter during construction and be, you know, notify engineer, whatever. What kind of adverse effects would there be, could there be if we disrupt that, because it says impacts to surrounding neighbor or residents or whatever the language is?
So I'll just, I'm making things up, I am aware of, no. But say there's a neighbor to the south and has a low area on his property that's served by a drain tile that goes through the neighbor to the north, and the neighbor to the north is doing a project, cuts that tile. Usually what happens is they don't cut and remain open, they get cut and crushed or cut and dirt blocks it. So now it's no longer draining that neighbor's farmland, and water builds up, and we get a call. So we're trying to maintain that connectivity. So if they do encounter a drain tile, they have to reconnect it, or if it can't be reconnected where it is, they have to reroute it around so that that water has, that drainage continues from the neighbor. It's on their own property, and it's only affecting them, it's not a big deal. But typically, these go from one farm to another, to another, to another's.
This is a common item with regards to development in a community like ours, where you're often seeing agricultural land that is being developed. And so we have regular measures that we have in place under construction where we basically reconnect the tiles and try and maintain any drainage that might be served by them.
And to be perfectly honest, I've never put a condition or suggested a condition in a preliminary plat like this, but I've encountered it in my career where it caused a problem. So I thought, well, why not just try to, you know, make sure that they're, at least advise the city engineer and...
And I think it was in here, it must be in here, because that's where I put my notes. The, the temporary road access or, or the road access to County 46 of Pillsbury, you know, what's the short and long-term plan for this piece of the overall development?
The short and long-term plan is that when the property to the east, which is owned by Mr. Charde, develops, when he develops that property, we would ask him to extend the road and connect it to Pillsbury. Of course, that would require coordination with Scott County, as that's their road, so we'd want to look at location, site lines, design, turn lanes, things like that. But it's not this, you know, city doesn't usually go out and require those extensions that kind of happen with development.
Do we have any concerns with it?
No, we deliberately asked them to ghost in the future connection so we could check horizontal, vertical alignments to make sure it had a reasonable chance of being able to be connected without some big, you know, two railroad tracks coming together crosswise or something, so, no, we don't.
It's noted in here that the township is aware of the proposed development, but comments haven't been solicited from the township. Have they been up to this point? I know we got an email from the township clerk, I think, that appeared to be more personal related, so has the township weighed in on anything yet?
No, and in fact, you know, when we do plat like Boulder Heights or Ridgeview Heights, where we annex property from them for development, we don't typically send them, you know, request comment from them. They do, one of their township board members is a liaison on our planning commission, so that's kind of the intent, is that applications from, or things that are on the planning commission agenda, that they would weigh in at planning commission meetings. They, they sit on our, yeah, they, they have, yeah. One of their board members sits on our planning commission.
And the intent isn't only that that board member weighs in at our meetings, but they're also expected, the understanding is that they'll carry information back to their board when it's necessary or appropriate.
Also, just want to note, we, when the city annexed this property, it was by property owner petition. just wanna note, we, when the city annexed this property, it was by property owner petition. We were asked to annex the property. We didn't just annex it at our own will, we were asked by the property owner or requested. And we went to the township and it was a joint agreement with the township on the annexation. They understood, they were supportive of it. They signed a joint resolution for early annexation of the property in two pieces. Okay. Next on the agenda would be items associated with item eight D, and these are all Purple Rain Properties slash Niagara items. Would you, are you interested in discussing the Park I thirty-five items, taking any action on the Park I thirty-five items?
I don't think we wanna take action necessarily, council? I'm interested going through all this at this point.
Is this helpful for staff to go through this at this point?
Is it helpful for you?
I mean, I've gone through it, so I mean, you know, it's when do you want the feedback or the questions or, you know, to talk through this, when is it the right time to have the conversation?
Let's just go through it.
It's helpful.
Let's go through it and then we'll write down it.
Okay, on the agenda was, again, a resolution approving a notice of decision on a wetland replacement plan application for Niagara, or for Purple Rain Properties. A resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow construction of silos which exceed the city's maximum height requirement in the I-one zoning district. Consideration of a significant user agreement with Niagara bottling. Minnesota deed business subsidy applications. Consideration of resolutions twenty-two, twenty-three twenty, authorizing the city to apply for a deed Minnesota investment fund loan on behalf of Niagara and authorize execution of a related loan agreement. Consideration of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-one regarding the support for job creation fund application in connection with Niagara bottling. And a business subsidy request, a request for reduction in sewer and water connection fees, a charge for Niagara, considering in authori- in resolution twenty-three dash twenty. So again, just a simple location map, making clear the, that everybody understands the location of the proposed bottling facility. Again, on the Niagara site specifically, Lot One, they're applying for their own wetland impacts. Point eight eight acres of permanent wetland impacts are proposed to be replaced by purchase of one point seven six acres of wetland bank credits. And the TEP, after several back and forths and requests for information, has made a recommendation for approval and determined that the application is consistent with the sequencing requirements of the Wetland Conservation Act. And then related to the conditional use permit, this map just shows basically the orientation of the facility. Circled in red is the location of the proposed silos which exceed this city's height requirement. There are three sixty-foot tall resin storage silos and three, two to be constructed initially and one at a future date. Sixty-five foot, nine inch tall water storage silos. The planning commission considered this request and has made a recommendation for approval after considering criteria contained in the city's zoning ordinance. We do have criteria in the zoning ordinance that allows for increased height under certain conditions, and the planning commission determined that those conditions have been met. This is just a blow-up of the location. And some renderings, a little bit difficult to see, but this is the south, southwest facing side of the building. The office area is on the right and the silos are highlighted on the left. And then you can see a cross-section, so you can see in relation to the building, which averages approximately thirty-seven feet in height and up to forty-one feet eight inches with some parapits, the silo height in relation to the building. The next item on the agenda, Tom, was just kind of a review of the bullet points related to the significant user agreement that had been drafted by the city attorney's office.
So, thanks to Councilmember Berg's insightful questions, we've already covered half of this stuff already, but I'll go through it quickly. So the draft agreement partners with and is authorized by the ordinance that was presented for consideration by the council earlier in the meeting. And really gets into the details that are specific to individual users. So the draft agreement that's been sent into the council for consideration discusses Niagara's water, water volume needs for phase one of the project. We should be clear that this only applies to phase one of the project, while phase two is noted. Again, there's no guarantees or approval specifically related to phase two. They would need to come back and amend the agreement in order to increase their limits with regards to water usage. It also discusses the city's water system capacity. You know, they're saying this is what we need, we're saying, yep, we feel we have the capacity to be able to meet that need. It discusses the city's ability to provide, that phase one is contingent upon the DNR approval of the water appropriations permit request. While we have the physical capacity on the system, the water appropriations permit needs to be in place because it, our level needs to be raised in order to provide the volume of water that they are requesting. The significant user agreement will need to be amended to serve any future phases, as I've just discussed. We require that they, you know, meter the use of the water. This is fairly standard boilerplate stuff in an agreement, utility agreement. It discusses the water rates and fees. So, the fees that are discussed are based on the adopted twenty-twenty-three fee schedule, as was adopted by the council just a few months ago. It should be noted that the connection fees are based on the business subsidy request. If the council varies from the request, then we will need to amend that portion of the agreement to correspond with the council's decision. And then on the sewer side, you have the same types of elements within the agreement that Niagara is talking about what their need is for sanitary sewer discharge. We discuss our capacity within the system to be able to meet it, that we want it to be metered. And again, same thing with the rates, it's based on the twenty-twenty-three fee schedule. But the connection fees are consistent with the business subsidy request to the city, and that section would need to be modified if the council proves something other than that. The term of the agreement is initially ten years with an automatic renewal for one-year terms thereafter. And the agreement is not effective until the water appropriation permit is issued by the DNR. Obviously, normally it would be effective when you approve it or the latter of the two, if it's not effective until the water appropriation permit is issued by the DNR and any terms or conditions of the water appropriation permit have been met. A couple, little smaller items of note, under the customer's water needs, under section one C, we discuss the number of base fees that we would charge. There's a, there's a spool up or a ramp up period, a pre-production period in the plant. And we, the agreement provides for a lower ERU number during that period because their water usage is less. Once the plant is under production, basically first pallet out the door, they would have to pay the fifteen fifty-one or the full calculated number of base fees that, for that facility. However, it's recognized that this facility may not be at full production for the lines that are initially installed. And after the second full year, we've agreed that we would reevaluate it and it could be reduced, but not less than eleven hundred units for the facility, and we also reserve the right in future years for us to then reevaluate it at the city's discretion if they're using, for example, in year, after year two, they aren't up to full facility because of current market conditions and as they're entering the market or current distribution or whatever it might be, we might reduce it down to like fourteen hundred ERUs based on that usage. But in the years after that, as the facility continues to spool up, then we can, then reevaluate and move it up or down as we see fit. More than likely up as the facility continues to ramp up production up to the fifteen fifty-one. Those are the major elements of the agreement. Does the council have any specific questions related to it?
I don't, anyone?
I do.
Josh, I bet you do.
I do, and I sent most of these, I think all of these, to staff ahead of time as well. So quick question in the second whereas statement, it talks about for the following uses, manufacturing of plastic bottles and plastic bottle caps for beverages. And maybe I'm misremembering, or maybe this means the exact same thing, but from what I recall, this, this plant is to utilize prefabricated, pre-made, I don't know what the right word is, forms.
They're, they're using pellets.
But they're gonna be warmed up and
Correct.
and, and blown up essentially and then filled up with water, right? It's not actually the creation of the bottles themselves versus the heating and.
Yeah, they're, they're not creating plastic on site, they're taking plastic pellets and.
Yeah, okay, that's exactly what I was thinking, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it didn't change when I read that differently. In another whereas, a little bit further down, I would just prefer to strike out the end desires to enable the project to operate and encourage the project to expand, maybe the latter half, and encourage the project to expand. I mean, when I read, when I'm thinking about this right now, what we're doing, and I know we're not approving anything tonight, but I, I'm approving, if we were to approve hypothetically, it's phase one with phase two possibility. But beyond that, I mean, this is a whole different world, and so I just, I don't, I don't support that statement of encouraging the project to expand. Now, we may in the future, but having it here now just feels premature.
Well, the reality is that if the council adopts the ordinance that's been recommended, they can expand, provided that they meet the criteria identified in the ordinance. Your suggest, staff reviewed your concern on this, and you're basically saying that it should be neutral language.
Sure.
We, I think it's appropriate to note that they have an intent to expand in the future, so it's clear to everybody.
Potentially.
But your language, you're suggesting a position-neutral set of language in that whereas, and staff does not disagree with that at all.
In the next whereas, I would just, you know, suggest we add current availability or in front of, yeah, insert current or something to kinda.
It, it just clarifies that we're talking about, and that's the reality, it's our current capacity. If we get seven years down the road and we've had other development within the community, at that moment in time, we may, you know, our capacity situation may change, it's just natural. And so that just clarifies that even further staff would support that recommended change.
And then just moving on to section one, customer water needs, you know, at full build-out, so again, that reinforces my brain, this is full build-out, there is no more expansion beyond that. I mean, so it just reinforces what I was just trying to say earlier. So I think it captures it there and as long as we stay neutral. I made a note in there about the ERU, ERUs just being spelled out, and I think that might be the first time in this agreement that it was, so we just may wanna consider doing that.
That's always a good point, they were spelled out later in the agreement, but it became after that, so that's, that has actually been noted by the city attorney and we'll have to, we'll have to make that provision, that was a good catch.
And then, a little bit further down in that same paragraph, however, the monthly water base fee shall not be reduced lower than eleven hundred ERUs after the startup date. I completely understand the why. Is this, though, in conflict with the idea to encourage and support conservation and demand reduction strategies? If we are requiring a minimum, so even if they're, and I know we're gonna charge that as a business, as a user, if I'm gonna pay for it, I'm gonna use it, so it doesn't incentivize me to reduce my usage at all, it actually encourages me to at least get up to that eleven hundred ERUs as quickly as possible.
I think from a practical standpoint, business is gonna use what they need to, to use. And most businesses, in their case, it's a product, so the more they can use, the better, I mean, it's selling more product. So I don't, I think the, the idea that, that minimum limit that's put in there for us that reflects the capacity of the facility regardless of the usage doesn't, isn't bear, it doesn't have bearing, because if I can't sell the water, I'm not gonna make it. So I think the amount that they're gonna produce is based on their actual sales and demand, so I don't know that that's, I, I would not believe that that's a, a concern related to that. And use is use, base fees reflect the capacity of a facility or what their calculated capacity can be, it's not the actual use and we'll charge them for that. So if they use less, we won't charge as much on the usage side.
That's a good point, yeah, all right, that makes more, more sense in my brain. Section two, water delivery, part B, shall be available to the property the project customer has provided in the agreement. Oh, the amount of the water supply capacity, I mean, I guess, what's included, I mean, so obviously it's the infrastructure, you know, we have the capacity within our current infrastructure.
So in, in this section, it's really referring to the aquifer, the infrastructure side is referred to in section three that follows this.
So then we will be able to confirm through either testing or water, some sort of testing to, to verify that we actually have the water supply capacity within the aquifer and I guess making sure that we have the tests done.
Well, the, the DNR will say you have the capacity and we'll do whatever they require of us to be able to allow them to make their determination. This may be a more technically accurate way to state it.
I'm gonna skip the rates unless you guys wanna talk about the rates right now. But, I mean, and, and do we wanna talk about the business subsidy piece now or wait on that?
Well, I think we probably should take a look at it, take and have a conversation. I don't know how far that conversation's gonna go, but I don't see harm.
You can, we can go into business subsidy. The reality is this, the, the draft language reflects the business subsidy. If you guys do something different, it'll just be modified to whatever you decide related to the business subsidy.
So if we're gonna get to it, I mean, we can hold off too.
Yeah.
Who are you giggling about? Nope, Alan's still on that. She's not yet, she's asleep, man. Totally put her asleep. Down to the terms, sorry, bear with me. So in here, we have following the initial term, customer may terminate the water in sewer service with ninety-day notice. This is, oh, sorry, this is page six twenty-nine of the packet, page seven of the, whatever, the SUA.
What section of the agreement?
Article three, general terms, section one, term, last sentence. Following the initial term, customer may terminate, so this is, this is giving the out to the customer. And, and I tried to think of this too, not just in this specific user, but, you know, future ones will use this as a template most likely or try to have it consistent. You know, there is no out for the city whatsoever in any of this and or any caps perhaps. And, you know, and I know we put in some stuff about the penalties and maybe even some considerations related to repeat violations with everything. It just, I, I don't know, I don't get a good feeling of not having, I feel this is like, this is where we're handcuffing ourselves, to use your words from earlier, of not giving us any sort of way to get out of it, and I, and I understand, we don't want to, you know, I am a sane council member, I don't know about these guys, but in the future, we may not have sane council members on here or mayors and want to screw things up, and we don't want that, so I get, I get why we want it to be tight. But should there be any?
Well, I think it goes back to the discussion we had earlier about our provision of services, and this may not be a good analogy. But we don't say we're not gonna come to your house if somebody calls in a fire, because the last three times it was a, it was a false alarm. As a city, we provide services and we provide services to everybody. We can ensure compliance with regards to those services. As we talked about, we have penalties in place to bring them into compliance, but we're, but we aren't in a position to deny service. Even if they're a repeated violator, then we just continue to utilize our, utilize the penalties that we have. And it's, those penalties are defined in ordinance, so if we find that the penalties are insufficient in the future, we can modify the ordinance to put additional or interim penalties in place for repeat offenders to apply pressure even greater. And as we talked earlier, based on your comments, council member, we would suggest adding to the agreement the other remedies language, which would provide us other additional leverage if we have somebody that's just a bad customer.
Feels like a month ago we talked about that, sorry, I forgot. Moving a little bit further down, the, the water shortages, fluctuation in aquifer levels, drought, and. drought, and this is vague in my brain of how it would actually be enforced, you know, a water source, or even, like the fluctuation in aquifer levers, levels, we, we know that they can go down three feet, 10 feet, 40 feet, may not have an impact, you know, is there, should there be, is there any criteria definition that we lean on when looking at language like this?
So, and, and I don't mean this response to be glib, but the, the, the lever is when we can't provide the water, whatever that is. Within the force, force majeure section, it does provide examples of the scale of things that need to happen, but if we had, if we knew exactly and had precise determinations of when it would go into effect, we wouldn't need a general force majeure language in any contract. So, it allows both parties to, you know, to identify that, it's not a perfect science, but there is guidances to the level of severity that's needed. And when it comes to a force majeure where we cannot provide service, it'll be whatever that is that means we can't provide service, that could be in the form of, a tornado comes through town and takes out some of our infrastructure, it could be somehow there was some contamination got into the, the, the water, it could be a terrorist attack, it could be any number of things, and a list that we can't fully, fully define. So, it's intentionally vague, and I guess I'll let the city attorney talk, less from a practical, but more legal standpoint.
Right, that's the intention of a force majeure, it's to identify situations where the party doesn't have control over what just happened, that prevents them from being able to meet the requirements under the agreement. What those are, nobody knows, you, you can't foresee, or the extent. If there's a disagreement at that time, that, that is not really something that the city didn't have control over, that's a disagreement at the time, but it, it's really just to give some guidance, and, and to be intentionally vague, because you don't know the future.
And then the last comment, I guess I would have in, in regards to this entire agreement is, would we ever, has there been other examples where things would be considered to add either like an escrow account, or, I don't even know the right terms, to require additional funds set aside for possible well interference issues, or unforeseen expenses to be incurred by the city, so we don't have to bear the cost that, and, and I say this because, you know, what's our, what's our annual budget for our city? Three million?
Yeah.
Four, I mean, on average? Let, let's say we got hit with a bunch of potential well interference issues, and now we have to cough up whatever that might be, you know, I, I'm trying to look out for the city and our budget, it, would there ever be an appropriate way to include in these terms some sort of escrow account or set aside that even if not used after five years or 10 years, it could be given back and it's full, or something like that, to, to protect us and protect the residents that we're trying to protect, just in case?
So, I'd go back to my previous comment on charging them for the costs of expanding the system. There is no improvements needed to the system to serve them related to well interference. We are the provider, those responsibilities lie, in my opinion, with the city, so we are making system improvements, they are simply receiving water out of the tap. We make determinations whether or not our system can meet those needs, but we also make determines about improvements that we need to make to the system. Any improvements that we might make in the future are gonna be to serve beyond it. So, for example, even with our current permit request, then, as Dave has pointed out, we may need to do some pump testing to, for the variety, lengthy set of reasons that he identified, we have to keep in mind, that permit serves more than just a Niagara, it serves other growth in the community, somewhere in the ballpark of maybe another 750 homes worth of capacity, for example. So, those are system costs that we need to do. Now, if they requested an amendment in the future, and there was a specific improvement that was exclusively or partially necessary for them at that time, then we would negotiate them, and it's that's been spelled out in the agreement and in the ordinance, that we can negotiate without, at that time, related to that. But under the current thing, if we're providing this expansion, I think I would have concern as a staff person that there isn't the nexus between the request and the system improvements that we are, that we are making, relative to other improvements that we might, so, let's talk about well interference. If we were to look at other capital investments that we might be making on the system, it would be my estimation that the cost for addressing well interference, if it does occur with adjacent wells and working with those property owners to address it, will be a minor portion of those overall capital improvements. And with regards to the funding, again, we, that comes to the health of your fund, maintaining sufficient reserves to be able to deal with the unknown and future capital improvements. And when we talk about the benefit of a large user on the system, large users provide the kind of cash flow that helps you be able to do that. In a generic sense.
Do you have more?
Hmm.
Okay.
That concludes this particular item. The only other items left are the business subsidy-related items, and would you like to present those from where you're at? Okay, I am going to take my seat.
Just flip it to the next slide. Okay, mayor and council, we've shared this presentation a couple times before, so like Renee said with her presentation, I'll just kinda fly through it and give you the main points. So, Niagara has applied for two state programs, the first is the Minnesota Investment Fund, or MIF. MIF provides funds to local units of governments, those local units of government then provide those funds to a business on a reimbursement basis. So, on October 18th, the city staff did receive a MIF application from Niagara Bottling. Next slide. So, we're at the very first step here, the very first bullet, we're still working with the business to complete the MIF application, the MIF application isn't considered complete until we have a signed city resolution in support, so that is tabled today. We're still at the very first step of the process for this program. Next slide. Ellers, public finance advisors were consult, or were hired by the city to complete financial analysis of the business as required for the application. Below is a summary of their findings, basically saying they found no problems, that the company will be unable to pay any debt back in the future, and that they are more like, more than likely to continue their growth. Next slide. Niagara requested $405,000 in MIF forgivable loans, the proposed term is 10 years at 0% interest, the funds would be used for machinery and equipment purchases, the purchases would then be listed as collateral in the event Niagara fails to meet any of the job creation requirements listed in the grant contract, that would be drafted following approval of, approval from deed, basically. Here's just the map showing you of all the, the MIF projects in Minnesota, so, over $35 million have been awarded, that led to total leverage of actually over a billion dollars, almost a billion and a half dollars for the state of Minnesota. Next slide. The next program we'll briefly talk about is the Job Creation Fund, again, through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. JCF provides job creation awards and capital investment rebates, companies must work with the local government, the city where a project is located, to apply to deed. On October 2022, we did receive a JCF application from Niagara Bottling. Next slide. Again, we're on the very first step here, the signed resolution and support is needed before the, the application to deed is considered final. Next slide. Niagara requested $800,000 in JCF funding, the funds would be used for job creation awards and capital investment rebates. Again, similar to MIF, if they fail to meet those requirements, there are clawback restrict, or clawback requirements that would lead to a reduced award. Next slide. Again, the map, showing you all the locations of the JCF projects in Minnesota. Next slide. The city's incentive offered to Niagara is a reduction in SAC and WAC connection fees, and that means sewer and water availability charge fees. Niagara is requesting total SAC reduction of just over $139,000, and WAC reduction of just under $3 million. The city will still collect SAC and WAC connection fees for a similar-sized development in the industrial park. Next slide. So, here's the financial analysis of gross SAC and WAC, and what that means is it doesn't take into consideration the anticipated increased annual costs to the systems, so without those costs considered in, it'll take the city .56 years to recover the revenue from the uncollected sewer fees, and water, it would take 3.33 years to recover that, and then start increasing that fund balance. Next slide. Now, we look at the net, and we throw in those increased annual water and sewer expenses into the calculation, it does increase the payback period for sewer, it's just under a year at .91 years, and water is increased to 3.65 years, so, just under four years. The city's business subsidy policy does include language, that is basically saying the policy is a guide in processing and reviewing these applications. The city shall have the option of amending or waiving sections of this policy when determined necessary or appropriate, simply due to the scale of development and associated benefits to the local employment, tax base, and utility funds, staff's opinion is that this may be appropriate for the city to waive sections of the business subsidy policy in this situation. Next slide. So, if there's any questions, Grant Turpin is the city, or attorney we've been working with on the business subsidy stuff, he can handle some more technical questions as well.
I'll ask some questions before you. And maybe, they may not be questions, they might just be statements. For the two applications that would go to deed, deed essentially determines that award, or if the, if they're going to award it.
Correct, they have their own review.
And that would be sort of, it would be what we, what I'm calling pass-through money, so it wouldn't be of any cost to us as a city.
Correct, beyond just staff time spent on the application and.
Yes. Is there timeframes on this? Do we have like a timeframe in which we have to respond to this?
Deed, so we, we've sent in everything we can send in at this point, they're still waiting for the resolution, and I believe the copy of the meeting minutes.
And we don't have any obligation to respond to this application from Niagara, I guess is my question.
So, our support for these applications is necessary as part of the process.
Right.
There's no specific timeframe related to them, but there are practical timeframes related to a project with regards to construct, constructability, but there isn't a, like a 60-day rule that we would have associated with a lane use application, for example.
I just don't see any cons in saying, is, in, in these two, in saying yes, send them to deed and see what happens, like, is there a con here?
No, from a staff standpoint, is, there's no, it's, there's no local resources other than staff time related to providing it, it's an incentive that the state, if they choose to do it, is deciding to provide to the project. I, I, we simply, is the way they've designed the program, need to be a conduit, and I think that's also for a way of them to be able to get local consent, so they're not unilaterally providing incentives to businesses locating communities without the city being supportive of provision of incentives to that business.
Your turn, Josh.
Can I ask a question?
Well, you are the mayor, I'm so sorry.
That's alright, I just, I always hear about the, it's called the but-for test when it comes to subsidies, and I guess, I just, I'd like to know a little bit more about how this project would not move forward but for the subsidy.
Grant, do you wanna cover that one?
Well, I, I just wanna say, as far as the but-for test goes, under the Business Subsidy Act itself as state law, there is no requirement for a but-for test. However, that said, your business subsidy policy does include a but-for test that is similar to tax increment financing. The but-for test in this situation is simply the opinion of council, so I cannot opine as to whether or not it is, this would move forward but for the assistance, that's something for council consideration.
So, as an incentive but for this incentive, they might not have decided to locate.
Understood.
Within the community.
Okay, sorry, Josh, that was the only one I had.
No, it's a good question.
Thank you.
No, I mean, you know, and part of the analysis too, and Ellers did their analysis on it, I assume we got all the criteria, or they got all the criteria related to long-term debt, company's ability to support additional borrowing, blah, 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 all that stuff, the review of gross profit and net income, I mean, all that criteria is checked?
Yep, so Ellers did their financial analysis, which dealt with a lot of that information, and in addition, Morgan Hill with Greater MSP also completed a D and B report, which goes into more detail, I guess, on debt and issues like that. So, we had both of those reports.
Well, yeah, no, and, and I mean, and I echo what the mayor had asked about, you know, would not, would this had not reasonably been expected to occur solely through the private investment within the reasonable foreseeable future? I mean, in the grand scheme of things, this amount of money is nothing to this particular project, in my opinion, no, I'm not the business, so I'm not speaking for them. And, and I, I understand that, you know, it, it is unlikely, or could be considered unlikely, that Niagara Bottling would have selected Elk and New Market but for the state and local subsidies being offered, but, you know, I, I think we already know, or maybe I'm speculating, that, you know, we weren't selected first, Eau Claire was, and there are probably other sites on the list, potentially, you know, so, I, I guess, and I understand what you're saying, Amanda, too, about, you know, this is pass-through, this is not, is technically anything impacting directly the city, besides the fact that we're all Minnesota residents paying taxes, that this ultimately technically pays for, that could be used for other projects that do more strongly or directly meet the but-for test, if, you know, besides just making it more attractive for profit margins or, or whatnot. So, I guess, not gonna get in the way of it, I, I mean, I don't love it from a, just a general standpoint, but really, it's not my decision, our decision, as a city to do it, it's up to deed, and if they approve it, you know, that's on them. Now, the best local one, I have more questions about.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, and, and I know there's the section that talks about, you know, we can waive anything as appropriate or whatever, but I guess I would just call out that, you know, our policy does not specifically, Kate, you borrowed it, there it is, you know, it's specifically for commercial and housing development and redevelopment projects, so, I mean, it doesn't even connect to industrial whatsoever, you know, our policy, so, I mean, in my opinion, our policy doesn't apply to something like this whatsoever, so we shouldn't even be considering it, unless we're looking to update our policy or waive it and say, well, industrial fits into commercial or some other piece of it.
I can give staffs and put to that, under section three goals of the policy, it's about halfway into the first paragraph, the sentence begins with, "The city's primary development priority is to encourage high-value commercial development, including but not limited to manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, office, and retail uses." So, we feel that industrial is covered in that definition of commercial development, and also in our city ordinances as well, and that's what that, the policy would be based off of the definitions listed in city code.
So, in short, we don't feel that there's a conflict or discrepancy with the policy with, related to the use.
So, regardless of my opinion on that, then I think we need to update the policy to specifically call out industrial, so there's the, more clarity in it, just for future considerations of applications, I think would be a smart idea. of applications, I think would be a smart idea.
Staff will make that note.
Yeah. Well, and I guess I would push back now that I'm reading my notes. You know, page 56 of the packet, you don't have to scroll all the way back up, 500 pages. You know, the first paragraph of the discussion calls out residential and commercial. The second paragraph specifically talks to the industrial user inquiries that the significant user agreements and the ordinances would address and apply to. So we're, I mean, we are very much specifically saying that this is industrial, so we, I mean, we need to clean this up if we're going to say this now applies, because we throughout, even our ordinances have definitions of industrial and commercial and residential and everything else. So I do, I just, I question why we wouldn't have it in there and...
Staff doesn't disagree that we could provide better, we could clean it up a little bit. We don't feel that there's a problem with the ordinance as it is, but it's maybe could be, we could improve it, excuse me, the policy.
Sorry. And then with, with the criteria, I mean, did we get access to, you know, the financial analysis of what was required to be submitted? So, because we do allude to the Butt Four test, and I'm trying to scroll there and talk and be a politician and delay, but I can't find it. But you know what I mean? Like, there's stuff in our policy that says we will analyze the financials of the business and determine that it will be in those instances or circumstances, shows a demonstrated financing gap, and meet one or more of the goals, so...
So as Grant pointed out, that portion of the policy reflects very closely the Butt Four test associated with tax increment financing. With regards to this incentive, that's not required under state, the first, second paragraph in the agreement specifically states that when the council considers appropriate, can make adjustments when they, you know, related to the policy and waive or not include all elements. This project, because of the scale and the potential public benefit, we feel is different than, has a bigger impact to the community. And so a strict adherence to that, we don't feel is necessary with regards to this use. As we indicated, this is an incentive, and the Butt Four is Butt Four provision of the incentives. They might not have come here because it was part of the proposal package that was submitted to the company and part of their consideration process.
And so is that the council's, I mean, I know it's staff's opinion, is it the council's opinion that it's inappropriate use and worthy of adjusting our policy for this project? Would be my question to my colleagues. I would probably...
I feel like if we're just quiet, you'll just keep going. Your question, Josh, is whether we agree with the policy or not, right? And how it's worded, or which part of it are you actually asking about?
Are we, are we going to waive the requirement for that financial gap to exist? Or do we see this project as being worthy and appropriate to waive that Butt Four portion of our policy because it meets the goals and other things?
I mean, I'm okay considering the subsidy request just without that particular Butt Four test. That doesn't mean I'm for or against it necessarily, but it's our own policy, it's our own definition of what we consider is, you know, it wouldn't come here but for this happening. So, you know, I think that's, I think that's probably pretty common in other cities. I don't, so I don't have a problem. I think we put ourselves into a box if we were to change it, if we were to make it more rigid, I guess. So I'm okay proceeding with it as it's worded.
Okay. I mean, and then, and maybe this is further on somewhere, "Assistance will not be provided to projects that have a financial feasibility to proceed without the benefit of the assistance." I mean, I don't know if a 2% reduction in the overall project cost is enough to stop it from proceeding. I'm of the opinion that it's not, but...
Right.
And I guess I should have read the next sentence. "Assistance will not be provided solely to broaden a developer's profit margins on the project," which is what I feel this does. And that's why I wouldn't support it. And then I would go back to, gosh, you're good, it's just waiting me out, and let me keep talking. Yeah, Tom, you said, you know, we collect fees to do studies, to do, to have things in place. We collect fees for, to have the buffers and the reserves so that we can, you know, cover those unforeseen things. And I think this is one of those areas where this is potentially why we collect those fees, and waiving them potentially puts us more at risk for not having those reserves in place. Yeah.
I mean, if we're not going to be voting on it, I don't know how deep of a discussion we want to have on whether we support the subsidy or not. To me, I think that's part of the overall package that we'd be looking at. So if we're not going to be voting on the project itself, then I don't know that we want to go too far into opinions on subsidies. But if we're looking for clarifying questions or comments or something, I think that's probably fair game.
And the only thing I would say to that is, well, maybe not the only, one thing I would say to that is, to be fair to the developer and the applicant, you know, just so we get it all out there of, you know, where we're at in the process so that it's not another potential change or whatever. They can make the appropriate decisions that they need to make for moving things forward, you know, yada, yada, yada. So just to have it out there so that it's fair to the applicant as well. That's the only reason I keep bringing it up, or one of the reasons I bring it up. If we don't collect these fees, who pays them? What happens? Do they magically disappear? Met council doesn't get them? I mean, like, why do we collect them if we just waive them?
So these are fees, so we collect fees to be able to support the system. This subsidy is not a cash payout. They're fees that we simply have not collected. So it's not reducing our financial position. And the reduction is a reduction down to something that meets or exceeds what we normally would have expected to have collected off the same acreage for similar uses. So the, with regards to providing the incentives, it's a financial analysis. We're not any worse off than we expect, we would have normally expected ourselves to provide it. We provide those fees and we collect from those users, there's a relatively, it's an ROI. What's the return on investment, so to speak, on that? So on the sewer side, we're estimating that the net is around a year, and on the water side, we're expecting it to be four years. And then after that ROI, there is a net positive with regards to the fees that, you know, then we're collecting going forward. So with regards to it, we don't think that by providing the subsidy, it puts the city in a worse position from where we expect it to be. And if the business comes financially, it's a benefit to those funds.
We're not voting, so...
Any other comments or questions before we move forward? Okay. I think we have one more item left, or we have public comment.
So that was just simply information that was provided to the council. The council strongly indicated that it wants to be aware of any of the feedback that we're getting from the public, so that is simply just provision of correspondence that we've received since the last time such correspondence was provided to the city council. So there's no presentation, it's just, it was information for council.
All right. So we would need another motion to table all Niagara items. Oh, Rich, I'm sorry.
So before you decide to table or not to take any action, I just want to make sure that we are considering the temporal, the time elements, given our construction season is limited. We can end up with items that a two-week delay means a six-month delay or a year delay. And one of those items is in your packet, it's the northern long-eared bat. I want to make sure you've got the facts straight on that, and that that's all part of the equation before you make any decisions to wait, because we wouldn't meet again possibly for two weeks. So, I mean, I can give you, if you have questions, you know, I don't need to go through it all, but it does, it does establish that this species is currently threatened. At the end of the month, it will become endangered. As an endangered species, the rules are stricter as of April 1. And those rules prohibit clearing of trees between now April 15th and November 1st unless you've first done a survey that's approved by the Fish and Wildlife Service, and then you can proceed. The length of that process, I guess you'd have to guess, because I would be too, or you clear the trees before April 15th, because the bats are still hibernating. And so they're in no danger at that point. And that's what, that's what the actual rule states. So just to make sure you're aware of that.
So I think, you know, ultimately, council has a position that we're not wanting to take a vote tonight. And I don't know that we want to rush that or change our opinion so we can cut down trees or avoid the study or anything like that, unless I'm incorrect.
Fully support that.
Okay. So any motions to table?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Just one minute. Can you identify the items that your motion is tabled?
Could you make a recommendation?
How about all of eight?
If I can suggest a motion, city council would be tabling items 8A, B, C, and D on the agenda. I do have to point out for the council that we can table them, you can have to make a motion to untable them. So your action actually begins with April 20th to the end of April, because we have to remove it from the table at the April 13th, and we move action until the end of April. Unless you wanted to direct staff to put the untabled items, I, we wouldn't have materials you could technically untable and discuss it on the 13th. But if it's not in, but if we don't know you're untabling it, there's a practical issue of timing with regards to the item. If you don't want to make a decision rather than tabling, you could concede the item to the 13th. If you could just resupply the same information, you wouldn't have to worry about the points of order related to untabling it. And if you aren't prepared to make a decision that night, you could simply continue it again. Just a suggestion, once the city attorney, it would be a cleaner way to do it from a point of view.
The only comment I would make, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
You know, after communicating with some folks from the DNR, you know, it sounds like we're still, you know, minimum two to three weeks out, likely four to six weeks out from the appropriation permit. And now, they put all the asterisks and whatever, that it could happen sooner, it could happen longer, but, I mean, we're looking at a four to six week window anyway. So I guess I have less concerns about waiting.
Yeah, I'm kind of that same boat.
So I would make a motion to table items 8A, B, C, and D.
Second.
It's a motion by Josh, second by Bryce, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. It's tabled. Okay, on to reports.
I have a question for you. Any questions for staff?
Okay. Anything for Public Works to pass on?
No.
Police, we had our chief, but he had to leave, so...
He's right there.
Oh, there he is. You were gone from your seat.
My partner had to go on a call, so I was here in case I needed to respond. I have nothing unless you have questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Engineering.
No report.
Community development.
No report.
Parks.
No report.
CCEC.
Mail-in deadline for the Easter egg hunt is tomorrow. It's not like the PTL. But you can still come in and register in person at City Hall. I recommend doing that so that your kids aren't late for the Easter egg hunt.
All right.
I'm all done now.
Other committee reports, nothing on scale, unless you have something for service delivery.
Primary discussion on service delivery was related to the data, shared data analysis position. And this future, the recommendation is going to the executive committee is that we end that position effective later this year or the end of the year, it's posted through the end of the year.
Really?
And there's a notification. There are some notice timelines related to the position under the new contract, but the recommendation is to open a position before or at the end of the year.
Interesting. All right. I-35.
Nothing other than our next meeting's April 13th.
Okay. Discussion by council.
Do we have any updates on Planning Commission or the open seats, open whatever, where we're at in that process?
We still need to conduct the interviews with the applicants we have. Staff announced over the last few weeks have basically put that on hold. So staff can contact community leaders to interview the child.
Any other discussion or motions to...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Bryce.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.